Okay, seems we have a form. All right. Today is June 16th, 2021. It is 5:31. I would like to call the Flint Board of Education Board Special Meeting to Order. Like I stated, it is 5:32 now. Board members, as I call your name, please reply present for the public record. Vice President Perry. Secretary Green. Do I see them on here?
No, you don't have anybody here. President McIntyre, you just have Laura McIntyre and Mike Neal and yourself.
Okay, so we don't form yet. I thought I saw Adrian Walker on here.
I'm here, I'm here.
Oh, okay.
So we do have a form. Okay. Board members, as I call your name, please respond present. Vice President Perry is not present. Secretary Green. Treasurer McIntyre.
Present.
Assistant Secretary McNeil.
Present.
Board Trustee Walker.
Present.
Board Trustee Wright. And myself, Carol McIntosh. So we're missing Ms. Wright, Ms. Green, and Ms. Perry. At this time, the board will hear any comments from the public. The public is reminded that you may raise your hand or submit a comment in the chat section to speak. Also, anyone who sent an email prior to today's meeting will have that read. Members of the public are recommended that the Board of Education by its bylaws, 1370 is not obligated to answer any questions, make statements or comments in response to issues raised by the public in general. Such issues will be referred to to by the referred to the Superintendent for Investigation, Study, or Recommendation. Public members, Stephen will call your name before you are unmuted to speak. Please restate your name and address before you begin to speak to the board. Stephen, do we have anyone that wishes to address the board?
Questioning the board, I do have a couple of hands raised. I'll unmute. Let's start first with Chris Martin. Reminder, Ms. Martin, this is topics related to the special board meeting. You are unmuted and you may unmute yourself when you're ready and begin.
Hi, good evening to the Flint Board of Education and to all the officials that are present. My name is Chris Martin. Certainly want to thank you all for your service to this community. Serving on the Flint Board of Education is something I know of very well as I spent eight years on the Flint Board of Education, two years as president of the Flint School Board. Of course, I understand in education, there are many daunting tasks that are ahead of us as we continue to grapple with the changing identity of our city of Flint. But I just wanted to say today that you all have done a wonderful job in making sure that Anita Stewart has been at the helm of the Flint Schools. One of the things I see as a pastor in this community and as a community leader is that sometimes in Flint, we need to make sure that we maintain our level of continuity and consistency. And so as a person who has sat in your seat and know the complexities and challenges of education and ever-changing finance and buildings and staff and unions and healthcare and everything that you all have to grapple with, I just want to speak in support of the type of job that our superintendent schools is doing. She's reaching across neighborhood lines and she's reaching across different aspects. And there is in our community to make sure that there is continuity and input through everyone. And as I said, as a pastor of a church here in the city of Flint, as a matter of fact, in the former Gundry Elementary School, I know how hard it can be to try to galvanize families and parents and students, even of those that I pastor, who are just depending on her to continue her vigilance and her vision to make our district better. So I want to again thank the Flint Board of Education for this moment and this time. We have a lot of challenges ahead of us, but Anita Stewart has done a great job. There are employees and students alike who are in my church, who are just very encouraged by her vision and by her consistency and the fact that she has worked her way up through the ranks in this district and has become a beacon light and hope for not only children throughout the city of Flint, but also those educators who attend my church and are just confident that working for the Flint Schools is the best thing to do because she has reinstilled a hope and vision and a glimmer in their eye that could have faded with all the turmoil and somewhat turnover that the Flint Schools have had. But we have a homegrown daughter there now. I just wanted to speak in support of her and what she's done for the city of Flint. So thank you all. I know your job is hard, but I appreciate you all for what you're doing and the sacrifice that you're making. Thank you for this time.
All right, thanks, sir. Another comment here, hand raised here from George Wilkinson. Mr. Wilkinson, you are unmuted. Feel free to unmute yourself and begin when you are ready. Sorry, Mr. Wilkinson, maybe he has some issues. See, I do not have the option to send an unmute request.
Okay, I unmute it now. I think I got it.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. And sorry for the technical difficulty. I wanted to echo the sentiments of Pastor Martin and speak on behalf of, as a pastor here in Flint, and also speak on behalf of Pastor Alfred Harris, pastor, president of the Concerned Pastors, and say a statement as it relates to the performance of Anita Stewart and a letter of support as it relates to Superintendent Stewart. Anita Stewart has been the superintendent of Flint Schools since July of 2020. It has been a year of transitioning from normal school to virtual school. The challenges have been significant. And to be a part of the leadership to transition the district in a transformative manner will be and has been difficult. The work by Anita and her staff has just begun. The creation of a strategic plan, the desire to provide quality learning facilities and resources, and establishing a culture of learning that would attract parents to send their children to Flint Community Schools is in the embryonic stages. Although Anita's time as superintendent has been short, you can see the character, courage, and confidence that Anita has to drive the district forward. We know there are challenges before Flint Community Schools. There are many heels to climb, but we believe in the leadership and vision of Anita Stewart. We support her with confidence and conviction as the superintendent for today and into the future of Flint Community Schools. Alfred Harris, Concerned Pastors of Flint, Michigan. And so wanted to just share that to inform and speak on and support Anita and what she has done and is doing as superintendent of the Flint Community School District. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I have one more hand raised. A Betty Nostrant. All right, Betty, you are unmuted on my end. Feel free to unmute yourself and begin when you are ready.
Thank you. I just want to say you all have done an amazing job since you have came into your positions. And Anita has also done an amazing job of turning this around and working through this pandemic. As a mom of special needs children, I can honestly say without Anita Stewart, I would I would have already pulled my children out of Flint Schools. She has helped me so much as she takes the time to speak to parents. And she has an amazing vision for the future of Flint Community Schools. I hope that she can continue to do amazing works as well as you guys. I am wondering about one thing, which is how special needs children are going to fit into the plans for the future and how they're going to make up the time that they've lost. And I'm hoping that here soon, we can have some answers to that. Continue to do what you're doing. You guys are amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. I still have another hand here. Mr. Arthur Woodson. Mr. Woodson, you are unmuted on my end. You may unmute yourself and begin when you are ready.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, hi, my name is Arthur Woodson. You know, it's mighty strange how things happen here in Genesee County and here in Flint. You put so much faith and trust in so many different people, elected officials, leaders, appointed leaders. And they show you one thing, but once they get in power, they show you something totally different. And they smile like they really like you or love you or whatever. You know, that they're really willing to work with you. And all the time, they putting daggers in your back. You have people running, talking, and protecting and doing all this other stuff and don't even know the whole truth of what's going on. You have people out here, activists and so-called advocates that jumps in after the fight and try to take it and make it their own, not knowing all the other things, underlying issues that's going on with it. It's a sad, it's really sad. And you really think that they work for the people, but what happened? They go to the table and what's in it for me? I will support whatever it is that you want if you put a couple of dollars in my pocket. We don't, and the reason why Flint is so reactive instead of proactive is because we allow them to have a meeting before the meeting and then they make a kiddie table for us. And we are invited to the kiddie table to support the decisions that they made for us. We're tied up overseers like Ridgeway White, like G.I.S.D., like Krim, like Genesee Chamber of Commerce, Youth Quest. All those are overseers. When are we going to start taking control of our own destiny? And quit depending on others to tell us what it is that we need to do? And quit running, selling people out, gatekeepers, boule. That's what we have here. And I'm going to say this, and Ms. Wright and Ms. Vera Perry, I really love y'all to death, man. And this is nothing personal, but I think it's time for you two to resign. I mean, seriously, I really do because that's why they running, these certain individuals running to the board to protect certain individuals. Thank you.
Okay, do one more check here. That seems to be it for the public comment at this time.
Okay. The public is reminded that you may submit your comments by email to FBOE@flintschools.org to have them read at the next meeting. Thank you. Board members. Board members, this special meeting tonight is being called to discuss Superintendent Anita Stewart's performance. At this time, we must seek whether Ms. Stewart would like to meet in closed session regarding this matter. Ms. Stewart, what is your pleasure?
I do not give permission for a closed session.
Okay. I would like to seek. Let me see. So at this time, you're agreeing to an open session then, is that so, Ms. Stewart?
I do not give permission for a closed session. So if some of you guys are going to talk about anything, then yes, it would be in an open session.
Okay. So I guess we're going to have to discuss it in an open session. Okay. The board members, I would like to entertain a motion in a second to approve. Okay, board members, I would like to entertain a motion in a second to approve a resolution to advise the superintendent. But am I, just one second. Can you guys hear me? Okay, we would do this in open session. We are here to discuss Ms. We are here to discuss Ms. Anita Stewart's performance as it pertains to this district. Some of the things that, first of all, I would like to say. Just a second. I am sorry about that. This is about Ms. Stewart's performance and her responsibilities to this district. Ms. Stewart has a clause in her contract that says that she is to keep the board informed. I don't feel like that has been the case. We have other board members that may want to speak to this, but I have, first of all, an issue with the fact that I've requested Ms. Stewart to come to this board to discuss several things. At this point, we have a school on a main boulevard that has not had trash pickup in a month. I heard that a search for employment was pulled. It never came before this board. Now it is back over. I had people looking forward to actually apply. We just, I just, I am having a problem getting informed as to how the district will run in this up and coming school year. I've received some bullet points and things of that nature, but no meat and potatoes. I see we have a driver's training program that was, that is coming, that has never came before the board. So I guess that is my issue. There is some things going on that has not came before the board. And then there are some things that should be coming before the board that are not being discussed. School will start shortly. Yes, we're coming off of a pandemic. And I'm just, this board cannot seem to get the cooperation and the attention that I think it deserves to address the needs of this district. I watched a parent try to enroll a student that got turned away. There was literally no process set up for taking appointments. And we're starving for students in our district. So I have some major concerns that I have brought up prior to this day. And it saddens me to even be here because I had such great hope for this district. Usually our issues are financial. We have monies in the district, but and with the teachers walking out due to the heat, it's just been so many things that this board has, I feel should have been at the table having a open discussion, a Zoom meeting or something as it pertains to moving the district forward. We are an afterthought and we're supposed to be on the front end. And that is per se her contract. It is just really hard to get information and we're to be fully informed. And I'm just not, I'm just not seeing that happen for us. Amongst some other things, you know, I also think that when this board comes to Ms. Stewart wanting hard answers, we just, we just, we just, it's like pulling tea from a lion's mouth. I don't feel informed. I have people from the community calling me. I sent out an email about the situation over at Doyle Rider last, last week, and I got another text message saying they're still there. So we can't even get somebody to dump the dumpsters. And we've had two violations with the City of Flint Fire Department that I had not ever even heard about. I don't know, you know, I just, I just, at this point, this board is not being informed. I don't feel like this board is being respected. Yeah, yeah, and that's about the size of it. And like I stated, this is, it is my hopes to get Ms. Stewart on track with the board so that we can move forward. This is a corrective measure, if you will, is what I'm hoping it will be. I don't want to fight with Ms. Stewart. I don't want to go to battle with Ms. Stewart. I just want to educate some students and be prepared when school opens up. I just want to make sure that our teachers are not being forced to work in 90-degree heat. I just want to make sure that if somebody has a complaint, they're not being retaliated against. I just want to make sure that this district is functioning with a HR person who is qualified. I ask for the certifications to the people that are in these positions because certain positions call for certain qualifications. And I'm, I'm just not understanding what's going on. And at some point, some questions have to be answered. So that is it for me right now. Is there any, let me see.
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Laura.
So I'd like to
Wait, wait, Laura, wait, 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 because I may have jumped the gun on that after she requested a closed session. Did we move it improperly seconded? I don't recall, I don't remember doing that.
You denied the request for a closed session. You can have open discussion.
Okay, so that is what we, okay, just making sure we're not out of line. And for us to have open discussion, this doesn't have to be voted, voted on. We can just have an open dialogue, right, Mo?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Laura, you have the floor.
Thank you. I really commend you, President McIntosh, for doing this. I know that this is difficult. This is, it's not what any of us really want, but we really are under a time constraint. And it just, I too agree that we're dealing with an increasingly hostile administration department. And it's almost becoming untenable to get the work of the district done with some of the answers we've been given, some of the information that has been withheld. So this is the next step in the process. There are several things that you mentioned. I've been, I have a list and I'm going to try to be as concise and quick as I can be so that I can give other people time to give input. But I do need these listed for the record. Currently, we do not have a Director of Public Services. And we are operating with Superintendent assuming his previous responsibilities without input from the board or from approval from the board. And as it stands, I have gotten several complaints about building facilities and maintenance and such. In particular, I'm concerned about the water filtration statements, sorry, systems. Dr. Sullivan is in, has completed their, her preliminary and Dr. Ammerman have completed their preliminary analysis of the water filtration statement, systems, sorry. And they're ready to go for the final testing. And this needs to be done now so that we can have safe, clean water for our students, not only over the summer, but especially for when classes resume in August. I'm afraid that without a Director of Facilities, that, that we're not able, I mean, as capable as Ms. Stewart may be, it's as, you know, Pastor Martin stated, she's got a lot on her plate. So we really need the separation of these, these job duties and responsibilities. I mean, she can't do everything on her own. She needs the cooperation. So there are just a few things with the, with the facilities, with trash that needs to be picked up, picked up. I mean, there's, there's a long laundry list. But at the top of that list for me is the, is getting the water filtration systems tested and in place. I mean, it's, as it is, Dr. Ammerman and Dr. Sullivan are doing this work gratis without any compensation. And we are lucky to have their expertise and their input. And I, I know they're getting frustrated, so as, I mean, as am I. The next point is do, is that okay? Okay, the next point is the drivers, the drivers' education. Again, this is just one example of many pieces of information that have been withheld. We finally got information about drivers' education after the program had already started. And it looked as if, at least according to the email chain, that notifications of this program were not sent out and advertised until after, a week after the program had started. So it's wonderful that we're trying to provide these services and to do these things for our, for our scholars, but we need to have a more concerted, a concerted effort. It's, it's, it's not enough to have flyers and notifications that don't reach the targeted audience or that reach them after the deadlines. As I also, I already touched on, it just seems like I've been acting in good faith up to this point, but it just seems to me that just based on the interactions, especially over the last few weeks, that the administration is becoming increasingly hostile and is creating a hostile work environment for me, especially given the disability challenges that I have, that I have addressed numerous times with the board. It just seems there's either an ignoring of my accommodations for disability or just a blatant violation of them. So I, I don't know what else to do informally. So I'm stating that. There's also the, the next, I've got one, two, three, four, five, Carol.
Okay, well, can you wrap it up? We have a meeting, this is a performance. Wait a minute, this is a performance. So get on to the things that, the performance issues that you have. And I'm not, so we can move on, other people may
All right, so Superintendent Stewart has been in place since July 2020, and yet we still don't have a strategic plan. There's a lot of talk about a strategic plan, but it, it, it isn't comprehensive. It isn't, even in my professional evaluation, isn't even a strategic plan. And, you know, we can't move forward without that. And it, and we also can't move forward without certain other elements that have been withheld. If you just want me to wrap it up, I'm just going to, I guess, not be specific. We've asked for contracts, qualifications, all sorts of things that have been either denied or just haven't been provided. And, you know, at some point in the upcoming meeting, you know, we're going to, I'm going to request you know, we're gonna, I'm, I'm going to request a forensic audit as well. So this is, this is all germane to Superintendent Stewart Performance Evaluation and I, you know, can provide more details and documentation if anyone needs it, but.
Okay. Would any other board members like to speak?
I'd like to speak.
Go ahead, Ms. Green, please.
I just want to say that I, I really hate that we're at this point where we are today. I do understand why we're here and it fires Pastor Martin, I think it was Wilkerson and Harris. I understand why they feel the way they feel because they don't have trouble getting information from Mrs. Stewart. It seems that they can get meetings whenever they want, whenever they want. We don't have that luxury. And we're board members. Getting information is very difficult and in my mind, it was simple, I will never forget the meeting five months ago when I asked five questions that I thought were very important. I could get no answers to any of them and then I was hit with fill out the documentation and you can take up to 30 days. When that happened, I was just completely shocked. And it's unfortunate that we have an employee, Mrs. Stewart, who were treated like this. And it's unfortunate because we don't deserve that. As a board, we do require certain information. We do require transparency. People outside of this board know what more than we know. And we have asked the question or we have asked for the, and we, we still don't get it. It's some kind of disconnect going on. I'm not sure if, if professional is crossing over into personal relationships, which it shouldn't. But I think something like that is happening. It's not personal for me. It's always professional. And it's unfortunate that we're at this point and that we as a board, myself, I can only speak for me. Me as a board member are disheartened that this has become a fight and it shouldn't be a fight. If it's a fight, we should fight together. And we're not doing that. Thank you, President.
Okay, is there any other?
President McIntosh, I support, I support everything that has been said. And keeping in mind that we are new board members coming on and I'm thankful for Danielle Green and yourself trying to keep us afloat and getting the information we need. But it's getting to be embarrassing when the people on the outside know more than the board and the board set the direction. And it's just impossible to get anything without some type of conflict. And if we can agree upon what we can't agree upon, and that is to move this district forward. Our kids, I know there's been a statement made that schools are run down and da, 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 and you only have about a few kids. But those few kids we have, it's more important to God, just like your kids are important to you. They deserve to have the same thing that these other kids have. So why is it because they're just small in numbers? When we come to try to fight for them, we are punished for that and I don't think that should be the way it is. We cannot look down upon Flint Community School and most of the problem we're having in our school is the lack of administration skills from the board all the way down probably and allowing things to go on as they go on. And when we trying to, all we want to do is to make sure that we have over $100 million coming here. And let's get together and fix our schools up for these kids. Some people don't think it's worth it, but we as a board member think it's worth it and we shouldn't be penalized for that. And this is very heartbreaking because I came in thinking that, wow, we got some sophisticated people on this board and we're gonna work together and we're just fighting and fighting and the kids are suffering because some people don't think. Even at Holmes Elementary School, the eighth grader had no representation from the administration for their graduation. They're important. So this is nothing personal. We just trying to do the job of the board because we are held accountable to this district. Nothing personal.
Would you like to speak, Mr. Walker?
Yeah, yes, if I, if I can. So I, I just wanted to say, I definitely heard my fellow board members' comments tonight and definitely respect everyone's opinions for sure. Like Ms. Green mentioned, it definitely saddens me to be at this point. As everyone know, again, I got appointed back in January and if I haven't been on the board for, oh gosh, I think this is going on my fifth month. So I can just speak from my experience that I've had from January until now. But not only the superintendent and the administration, has it been perfect? No. But in terms of, you know, what I feel like in terms of feedback from the administration, seeing the administration, especially the superintendent be present is something that I've experienced since being on the board, whether it was, you know, walking with me through, you know, schools to help me better understand the current landscape, showing up at enrollment events such as the King of God roundup that we did at Southwestern. And then again, just showing up in community and being present. And, and this extends the same to members of her administration as well as it relates to, again, the work that they do tirelessly on behalf of scholars in our community. Again, nothing has been perfect, especially in the midst of a pandemic and the virtual landscape that we've been in, but it's my hope and my prayer that we'll be able to get beyond this and again, put the scholars' interests at, at the forefront again. And again, hopefully create a bright future for them. So I'll just leave it at that and thank you, Madam President, for the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, I have a resolution that I would like to introduce and I am also requesting board supports for this to act as a verbal warning for Ms. Stewart to, it should be documented that Ms. Stewart has received a verbal warning about, as it pertains to keeping the board informed as to what is going on with the district. Also, a verbal warning that Ms. Stewart is to work with the board on the direction of the district, thus said for contract in Article Four. The superintendent agrees to faithfully perform those duties assigned by the board and to comply with the directives of the board or board president with respect to those duties. The superintendent agrees to comply with applicable laws and regulations to fulfill all state and federal and legal regulatory requirements and to follow the board to to carry out the educational programs and policies of the district during the term of agreement. The superintendent pledges to use her best efforts to improve the quality of the school district operations and to consistently promote efficiency in all areas of her responsibilities. And I, the verbal warning is because I do not feel that those duties are being met. So at this time.
Board President, if you can take action on the, the resolution for the verbal warning, do I get an opportunity to respond to anything that was stated today?
Feel free, Ms. Stewart.
Thank you. So thank you, Board President, for this time and for allowing me to respond. A couple of things that I, that I do want to address. The very first one, discussions about the trash that's on the premises of one of our properties. Yes, I did get an email from Board President on Thursday, June 10th, about the recycling being that it had not been emptied. I immediately went into action to contact the company to figure out why. The company is transitioning from one company to another. However, that does not excuse them not fulfilling their contractual obligations to us. I immediately shared with Board President my steps, what I was taking to rectify the situation. Yes, I understand it has not been fixed as of today, but I do want the board to know that I went above the supervisor's head today because it had not been resolved and we were told several times that it was going to be resolved. The information about the driver's training. I emailed a flyer to the board as soon as I got the flyer from YouthQuest. This is not a Flint Community Schools driver's training. This driver's training is being put on by YouthQuest. I emailed the board the flyer as soon as I got the email. I also provide monthly updates to the board. Every month since March, March, April, May and June, the board has received monthly updates. This month, I get, I get two emails that, was there a May update? Yes, and I forwarded it to the, the two individuals so that they could see that I have been providing updates since March to the board. And unfortunately, it just seems like the, the updates are not being, are not being read, but there's information in the updates. There was information in the updates about driver's training. There was information in the updates about, about other, other things. Was there a request for contracts and qualifications? Yes, Board President gave me a request form that was filled out on the board's form and I have until this Friday to get that information back to Board President in regards to contracts, qualifications, job duties. My team and I are working on that form and we have until, we have until this Friday to get that information back to Board President. The form stays 30 days. We are working hard to get that information back to Board President in the midst of closing out a school year, working on summer school and then trying to prepare for the 21, 22 school year. So we're trying to get the information to you and we are going to meet the deadline of getting that information back to Board President before the 30 days are up. There was a, a, a comment made about a teacher, about a, a parent being turned away. During that time, I was on vacation when the parent was turned away. But I was informed that Assistant Superintendent Jones handled the situation, contacted Board President immediately after, and to my understanding, it was a misunderstanding of what was, what was actually happening, what was communicated to the parent, but the problem was immediately resolved and taken care of. This comment about a hostile administration, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of thrown back and surprised that this comment is being used against me on June 16th when I requested a closed session with the board on May 12th to talk about a hostile work environment. Now, a month later, I'm being told that administration is, is producing a hostile work environment? Not to mention, a staff member filed a complaint against the board a week ago. That has yet to be addressed, but then this week, we're talking about administration is, is producing a hostile work environment? It just kind of seems like the words that administration is using is now being turned around on administration. And that's like, kind of, that's kind of strange and odd to me and I'm telling you, it's, it's catching me off guard. The Director of Public Services, we don't have a Director of Public Services. We have a Director of Operations. And the Director of Operations resigned in May. Immediately after the Director of Operations resigned in May, the position was posted. Yes, I assumed the duties because somebody has to do it in the meantime because we don't have anyone. I started looking for someone to fill in as interim so I could get somebody who used to work in this position, who's retired, who would possibly want to come back. Nobody wanted to come back. Nobody wanted to do it. So at this point in time, if there is a, a vacancy, yes, it falls on the superintendent's neck to make sure that she gets, that she gets it done so that things could keep going. Am I an expert in operations? No. But I'm trying to fulfill the role until we can get some, until we can get somebody in there. That, that person resigned in May. The base, the, the posting went up. We did interviews last week for this position, so we're trying to get it filled as soon as possible. I'm not just sitting around not doing anything. I'm trying to fulfill it and trying, trying to fulfill that responsibility.
Okay, Ms. Stewart.
And I've stated this before, I'm going to follow the bylaws. I'm going to follow the, the policies. Unfortunately, your bylaws say if there's a request, fill out the form. And yes, we have 30 days to, to turn things around. Not all things take 30 days. A lot of stuff we can immediately turn back around to you. Some things may take a little longer, but administration is trying to turn those back around to you if we have something on official record of a request from a board member. And so if, if, if I'm receiving a verbal warning because I'm asking us to follow our, our bylaws, then I understand that, I understand and there's nothing else that I can do about it.
No, 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 this verbal warning is because if you're gonna put Flint Community students in a car, you have to bring that before the board because they're unlicensed drivers. And we hadn't heard anything about it, nor have we heard anything about interviews. And we've really been wanting to know about that. And every face-to-face I have with you, I ask you to, let's get together with this board and let's talk about what we got going on. Because I'm getting calls from board members because they don't know what's going on. And we cannot, and when I ask you about the organizational chart, when I ask you was before you went on vacation and you gave me the organization, just a basic. And I had asked for some meat and potatoes and you sent me an email saying you want me to drop everything and yada, yada, yada. And I told you, no. You said when you got back from vacation, you would address it. The issue is to me.
We've been working on it and we have been addressing it.
Excuse me, Ms. Stewart. In my mind, if you are the administration, your organizational chart should already be worked on if you have people working in those roles. I mean, like I said, we, it's hard to get information. It's hard to get, it's a lack of transparency. It's hard to get information and like we said, anytime we ask for information, it's gonna be some type of comeback with somebody done something. You accuse me of threatening you. I feel like when you called me into your office on the fly for that face-to-face, like you've done on more than one occasion, and I accommodate you. I work a day job. This is not my only job. I work a real, another day job. And when you call me right now, when I get off that day job, I come to see what Nita Stewart wants because she's running our district. Okay, I, I have a standing one-on-one that I wait for to speak with you. And when I get in there, some of these things that I've asked you about, we can go over. We never do. I've always so asked you, so let's come before this board, let's get together, let's work out some of these issues. Let's get down to the hard details and it hasn't happened yet and I've been asking you about that ever since we've started talking about the strategic plan, darn near since I became the president. It's like, no matter what we ask or what we want, we're not being accommodated. And, and, and like, and like Ms. Green said, but when somebody else calls outside of the district, on several occasions, this has happened, and me and you have discussed this. People can call you outside of this district today and meet with you this afternoon. As the president of this board, yes, I have a problem with that because I'm trying to do this district's business. They're trying to do their business and you're accommodating them when you're held accountable to this district. I'm not saying you have to jump, but when I ask you for something, it takes 30 days every time and we need, who's running this district and who's doing what? We should know that at all times. It shouldn't take 30 days to find that out. But if you want us to wait, which is usually what happens, you know, it's all, you know, and we give you grace. When your paperwork or you need an extension or whatever you need, we work with you. But like I said, when we ask for something, it's always hardball. And we had a conversation May 5th about how things were going. And I also had a conversation and read your entire contract as it pertains to some of these performance issues in May 12th, before you made your complaint. So I've had these issues and this board has had these issues before you filed your complaint against Ms. McIntyre after she questioned the legal fees that are astronomical. Then, and you've always, and you guys have always said she's hostile. And then when I sit in, the meeting goes smooth. Maybe it's not just her that is hostile. And that is my problem and that is our concern. Because we have to be able to approach you guys and ask you for things and when we do, we're treated like the enemy, like we're doing something wrong. Everything's a big secret. You're supposed to be operating in transparency. We, we shouldn't have to be afraid to ask, ask you anything about what's going on in this district. But if we do, we know we better be prepared for a fight and we better have ourselves covered. It's never an easy process and, and it shouldn't be like that. We have a district to run together and that is not happening. You are off on the fly, on your own, and just like you're telling us not what you've been doing, you could have been done that. And no, I can't always read all those emails and if I put something in writing for you and I filled that 1190 form, give it back to me in writing and give it to Mo, so Mo can put it in my hands, okay? Because all these emails, everybody can't read all these emails. If we ask you for something in person, if Ms. Laura is asking you about financial documents, why can't we go over them in person? We asked for a debt elimination workshop or something to that effect. We've heard nothing about that. A true breakdown so we can look at the numbers. Like tonight, we have to go over the budget. You guys didn't have the budget proper. We were off $2,080,000 last week. And now we have to vote on a budget tonight? Should I trust these numbers tonight? She and your CFO has an assistant. So these are the things we're talking about. So when we're asking for financials before our backs against the wall, we're met with all this contingency and all this. And then when we get to the table, we're $2,080,000 off. That is not acceptable. And we have to be concerned about what is going on because when this falls apart and it is literally falling apart before our very eyes, this board will be held accountable.
For President, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know anything about the $2,085 that you're speaking of. But with the budget being off. Uh with, with the budget being off, uh so I'm not sure, I'm not sure where that's coming from. So I do know that last week there was a mistake in the, in the resolution for a contract that needed to be fixed. But I don't know anything about a budget being two million dollars off. And then the other thing, um Board President, um I want to say is I've requested more than once. For, um, for board training, for myself, as well as the board, for myself and you. Because the both of us are both new to our positions. I've requested that, I contacted M A S B, I contacted debt making to see if we can get this going. But yet, I haven't heard anything about this, 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 us, us having any movement on it. So that we can have board training. Because my understanding is the board is governance and I'm management. And there's so many gray areas and there's so many areas of crossing over of my, of my perception. That that's why I've requested board training, so that I know what it is that I'm supposed to be doing and what it is that the board is supposed to be doing. And I, I know I started requesting this back in February and we still don't have it today.
And I, I've requested board training, I've talked with Deb and I meet with Deb Monday. I also asked you to do the strategic training through M A S B. And you told me you was doing strategic training with MSU, but you said you didn't say that, but you did.
No.
And ma- okay, well, maybe, I don't want to argue about it, Ms. Stewart, because the problem is this. The problem is this, the problem is this, and this is what this report is about.
Okay.
We cannot do to the wordplay and all the finagling. All I have ever requested from you is to, when we talk about our issues, even as it pertains to the strategic plan. I have asked you, get with the board, even if it's in an open meeting, the community has a right to hear these things. And get with the board and let's bang it out and see which way we're going. The only time you want to deal with this board as it pertains to your strategic plan is if you've got us in the room with the partners or a breakout session. It is divide and conquer from what I'm seeing and the rest of it. And I also have a resolution that I want to introduce, um, so I'm done, I'm done, I'm, I'm not gonna say anything else. I'd, like I said, I, I, I've said enough. Um, is there anything else, Ms. Stewart?
No, ma'am.
Okay, board members, I would like to entertain a motion in a second to approve a resolution to advise the Superintendent of the Flint Board of Education of the expectations for her. Um. I need a motion and a second for my resolution for advice to Superintendent.
It's moved. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the resolution to advise the Superintendent of the Flint Board of Education of the expectation, expectations of her. Are there any questions? Seeing there is none, the motion to approve the resolution to advise the Superintendent of the, uh, Flint Board of Education's expectations of her. Will be conducted by a roll call vote, it's a call your name, please say yes or no to approve, Treasurer McIntyre.
Yes.
Trustee Wright is not present.
I am present, trustee Wright is present.
Yes or no?
No.
Uh Vice President Perry?
No.
Assistant Secretary McNeil?
Yes.
Uh trustee Walker?
No.
Secretary Green?
Yes.
And myself, yes, the motion passes for yes, three no. Um. Seeing no further action, the board, but is there, seeing there is no further action by the board, I declare the special board meeting adjourned. We will now open our special, is it time? We will now open our special budget presentation and regular board, in the regular board meeting for our six-thirty meeting.
I, uh, I believe we just lost Mrs. McIntosh.
She probably can get back on.
Hello?
Yes, you're back.
Okay, I had to make sure. I'm the first one back, I can't believe it.
No, I'm back.
You're the only one who left, Ms. McIntosh.
Oh, okay. Okay. We got a minute, ready, let me get my paper. Okay, uh. Flint Board of Education Special Budget Presentation Meeting and Regular Meeting for June sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, the time is six-thirty. I would like to call the Flint Board of Education Special Budget Presentation Meeting and Regular Board Meeting to order, it is now six-thirty. Board members, as I call your name, please reply present for the public, Vice President Perry?
Present.
Secretary Green?
Present.
Uh Treasurer McIntyre?
Present.
Assistant, Assistant Secretary McNeil?
Present.
Trustee Walker?
Present.
Trustee Wright?
Present.
And myself, Carol McIntosh is present. Board members, it is now time to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I will lead everyone by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I will turn the floor over to Ms. Don Prey.
Good evening, board. Stephen, I have a presentation. Ready?
Okay, I will give you control right now.
Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
I want to go over the budget development process, um, I'm gonna go over for, um, the fiscal year twenty-one final projected budget and the fiscal twenty-two. Uh, projected budget for fiscal twenty-two. I want to go over the budget development process, which is where we work with H R and learning support services and state and federal local grants. And we go over all the staffing for the year, this includes district and contract staff. And we try to ensure that we properly account for everyone for the funding source. The district staff represents approximately fifty-six percent of the budget, this is salary plus benefits. And our contracted staff makes up an additional thirteen percent of the budget. Um, the fringe ben- benefits and retirement costs for the next fiscal year are, do not have a significant increase. But the, uh, updates have been placed into the budget for next year. Our grants are individually budgeted and we ensure that all the revenues and expenditures equal, so that way there is no, is generally no net impact. Unless there are some indirect costs which allow us to have unrestricted revenue that is going to the district. And that way we can use it however we need to. The grant expenditures, uh, make up about thirty-eight percent of the overall budget. Special education is a part of the general fund, but we do, um, keep them separate so you can tell what's relating to special education. And we ensure that we provide all the services per state and federal laws. And special education makes up about fifteen percent of the overall budget. And we do have a lot of contracted staff in our special education section of our budget. We take into consideration the contracted services that, um, that are, that we have and include those in the budget. That includes teach-out, C S M and Vartech potentially for next year, but that's what is concluded for sure for this year. All of our athletic accounts are budgeted, um, in accordance with the athletic director. So we can make sure that we're prepared for the upcoming year for the sports that we're gonna provide. And then our remaining expenses for general fund with heating, electrical costs, teaching supplies, um, potentially some different, um, um. P Ds that we'll have, we try to roll those over from one year to the next. Um, for fiscal year twenty-one, we received COVID funds, we received four point three million dollars in reimbursements. And I'm stressing the word reimbursements, um, for Esser One, Esser Equity and Gear, those were reimbursements. We had to spend the money first and then submit for reimbursement from the state. Our eleven P and, um, one oh three two D COVID funds came across with our state aid. And so we use these funds to support some pandemic-related expenses. And that would include some of our, um, P P E, um, additional cleaning, those kinds of things. So for the fiscal year twenty-two, I did include the nineteen million, um, that has been allocated to the district for Esser Two. Um, for fiscal year twenty-two, because even as of today, we still don't have authorization. From the state that our budget has been approved that would allow us to use these funds. So therefore, I'm not projecting them in fiscal year twenty-one, but I am projecting them in fiscal year twenty-two. This is a snapshot of our fiscal year twenty-one, we had a beginning fund balance of eleven point eight million dollars. Our revenues for this year, what we're projecting is sixty-seven point five or sixty-seven point six million in revenue. However, our expenditures are seventy-one point one. So this will mean that we are expecting to have an operating deficit of three point five, rounding three point six million dollars. And with the operating deficit, that just means that our expenditures are exceeding our revenues. With having this operating deficit for fiscal year twenty-one, this means that our ending, our projected ending fund balance. Will be reduced by the three point six to eight point three million dollars. So this is going over line by line, showing you what some of the differences are that we had compared to our last amended budget. For our local resources, we are expecting a decrease. And this is due to us receiving less revenue from the city of Flint for tax income. This is potentially related to COVID and people having less, um, less income and so therefore they didn't pay their taxes. Our state resources, we're expecting another, um, decrease there. And this is basically because, as I stated before, our grant revenue and expenses are tied. We had expected that we would be able to spend more in our grants. But because we can't do the expenditures, we can't get the money back to be reimbursed for those expenditures. And some of those expenditures were reduced because we, uh, can't get the supplies due to COVID, it's harder to get some of the supplies. We do have an increase for, um, our federal funds. And this was also related to having ex- uh, excess funds from COVID. And then we did, were able to do a little bit more, um, spending with like our title grants, which are federal grants. And because we're trying to do, uh, increase our utilization of those grants. So for our basic programs, um, we, this is also tied to our federal spending. Where we were able to do a little bit more basic programs than we had expected. Being able to again, do better utilization of our title grants. So for the one million dollar decrease for added needs, we had, um, some vacancies that went unfilled. With us having, being in the virtual environment for COVID, this allowed us to be able to go without filling those vacancies. And so therefore, we were to have some savings there. With continuing education, this is generally where our, uh, gateway programs are. And we had less participation to us being in, due to us being in the virtual environment. For our pupils, we had a two point eight million dollar where we spent less than we expected to. And again, with us being in the virtual environment, we weren't able to do administer some of the programming that we had intended to administer. When we thought we were gonna be in a face-to-face environment. We did do the, um, the amendment expecting that we would go back to face-to-face. And unfortunately, we weren't able to, to do that. So for, and this is the same thing with the instructional staff line. That of course, we had expected to be able to do more, but with us being in the virtual environment, we weren't able to do that. So with, um, our operations and maintenance. We, uh, had additional spending with related to having the increased, um, services that we provide for cleaning. And then that's where you will see where all of our P P E that we had to purchase for COVID, that goes in that operations and maintenance line. For pupil transportation services, because we weren't face-to-face, we didn't have to spend that money on transportation services. So that was significantly decreased. You will see in the central line that there, that appear, that is a, uh, increase of three million dollars. And that is where we have our stability workforce payments that we plan to pay to our staff for working, um. To help maintain us having stable staff so that we'll be able to provide our students in the future. The opportunity to recover from learning loss due to COVID. With our, um, uh, I'm sorry, with our athletics. Um, again, that is decreased because we were in a virtual environment. And so therefore, we weren't able to provide our athletics all year round for school. And with our community services, we had a lot more programs, we had planned for the year. But because of purchases that we weren't able to make due to not being able to get the supplies from the supply chain issues. Um, that a lot of districts were experiencing due to COVID, so we couldn't make those purchases. And so a lot of purchases, we actually have to roll over into fiscal year twenty-two because we couldn't get those supplies. So with all of these changes, we had expected, um, from our original amendment to lose. So with all of these changes, we had expected from our original amendment to lose 8.2. But with these decreases, we are now only projected to lose 3.6 for this school year. So for a snapshot for fiscal year 22, we had the projected fund, beginning fund balance of 8.3. We expect to have revenues of about 71.6 and expenditures of 79.9. So the expenditures will be increased because with us going back to a face-to-face environment, which is how we made the projections that we expect that we will be going back to school face-to-face, there are a lot more expenditures that will increase. And you can see that on the next few slides as I go over it. That shows that we will have an operating deficit of the school year of $7.7 million. So one of the things I want to share with you is that for last school year, for fiscal year 21, 22, our foundation allowance was based upon a super blend for last year. And what that did was that it helped districts that may be having declining enrollment, that it wasn't a huge decrease in your state funding. And so that kind of helped us steady from one year to the next. But with us now going back to the normal foundation allowance calculation of a 90-10, that's where we will be using, it takes 90% of your FY '21 fall student count plus 10% of your FY '21 spring student count. And then your, your foundation allowance is based upon that calculation. Considering some information that we have received and part of the enrollment study that was provided to us by Plant, Marine, and Cressa, we are calculating our student count to decrease to 2,099172. So that will generate the combination of the change in the calculation of foundation allowance and the change and the decrease in our student count will generate us to have a decrease in our state aid for fiscal year 21, 22. There is some information out there that our foundation allowance dollar amount could increase for fiscal year 21, 22, but because that number is still not final for, for projection purposes, I held it constant at the amount that we have for fiscal year 2021. This slide, I just want to show you what our foundation allowance history has been. And you can see the projection that I am keeping consistent with 2021. So that's what I'm using for 21, 22. So even if the foundation allowance is increased by $100 per pupil, that would generate an additional $300,000 for us as a district, just to give you an example about what the potential could be if there was an increase. So I'm just want to show you the enrollment and what the enrollment history and what the projection is. And so you will see that, you can see the, the decrease in enrollment. And you will see that from 1920 to 2021, it is being held consistent, as I stated, because of the, the calculation for our enrollment using the super blend, which was done to help districts that may have had a decrease and also to try and help everyone with the pandemic. So that's why you will see that it doesn't look like there's a, too much of a decline. So with my fiscal year 21, 22 budget, when you compare what I'm projecting for 21, 22 compared to what we are projecting our final budget to be, I'm doing a decrease of, I'm taking a small decrease for, again, the tax revenues because still people will, are kind of, will be reeling from the pandemic. And so I'm just projecting that potentially we won't get exactly what we got this year for our taxes. So again, these are just projections, and I want to make sure that everyone understands that as soon as we get our student count in October and we get better information, we will do an amendment immediately, more than likely in the November timeframe, so that we can get a better budget in front of you once we have better information. At this time, a lot of things are still in flux. And so therefore, these are just projections based upon the most up-to-date information that we had at the time that we did the budget. So you will see the decrease in state resources, which is our state aid. And you will see there is some small grants in there, but this is mainly our state aid that you see this big decrease, which is what I was trying to explain to you, is because of our decrease in enrollment that you'll see that we went down from 3,0661 from our blended enrollment, and we're projecting to go down to 2,0991. So with the decrease in students, in addition to the change in the calculation for foundation allowance, we're projecting a decrease in our state aid of about $7.3, $7.4 million. So as I mentioned to you before, the 19 million from Esser 2, I included that in this budget. I did not include the rest of the Esser 2 that was appropriated but hasn't been, that wasn't appropriated yet to the district. So therefore, I only put in the information that I had available at this time. So 19 million is in here for the Esser 2. I apologize. I didn't mean to hit that. Sorry. So that is what is in there for Esser 2. You will say that, why don't I see a straight 19 million? That's because we try to guesstimate as to what we think our title allocations or any of our other federal grants may be. And so we don't try to estimate too high. And so therefore, you don't see a, a exact change of $19 million. And then for the inter-district and other resources, we're also making a guess at what we think our ACT 18 payments will be and what we expect perhaps for some Medicaid service fees that we will get will be. So those are all projections. So for our basic programs, we expect that since we will be going back to a face-to-face environment, that we will have to include more sub-costs. There's going to be more spending for our grants with supplies and providing more services to our students since we'll be in a face-to-face environment. The protected increase for added needs, again, a lot of these things, we're just making some small increases, expecting that with us going back to face-to-face, that these things will increase. So that's the same thing for adult and continuing education. We expect that more students will participate in our, in our adult ed programs because it's, we're back in a face-to-face environment. For pupil services, it's just a small increase, and we just put a small increase in there for grant supplies, for general administration. We are protect, projecting some, some decrease in some of our vendor contracts. So that's what you see that, $50,000 there for, for business. We have, for our payroll services, we have a contracted person, which you will, you, we talked about this last week, that we're going to have our extended services for our payroll contracted person. And we will still be trying to, and we're trying to hire a district employee. So we'll have the cost of the payroll service contract plus the new employee and then the extra training that we'll try to get for, from the GISD to help with the W2s when our contracted payroll person is no longer with us. So this is going to be a one-time charge. It's not something that we'll see going forward. For our operations and maintenance, due to the fact that when we passed our millage, we separated where the amount of money that will go to the sinking, I'm sorry, the amount, the meals that go to the sinking fund will be decreased and it's only going to be 1.12. That's a lot less than we were accustomed to receiving in our sinking fund. So the district will have to spend more general fund dollars for different expenses, repairs related to our buildings. So that is a conservative, it's not even very conservative. I just increased a little bit trying to, to think of what we potentially would have to do. So that's what's there. For transportation, pupil transportation services, I took the levels back up to what it would be if it was a non-pandemic year and what our transportation would cost us. For the central admin line, again, you will see the 2.8 there. And that is again, for workforce stability payments to staff so that we can ensure that we have a workforce that's there to provide our students with the opportunity to recover from learning loss. You'll see the increase in athletics. That's because we expect with being in a face-to-face environment that we'll be able to run our athletic programs all year. And other, this increase is due for robotics, and we expect to be able to utilize our robotics program with us being back face-to-face. And then the last decrease you'll see there, being hopeful that our tax abatements will be decreased. So all of these charges, all of these expenses and changes will show that we will have revenues over, under, I'm sorry, revenues under expenditures of $7.7 million and that our fund balance will be decreased to $534,000. And again, as I stated before, these are projections based upon the most up-to-date information that we have at this time. Once we get better information after we do our student counts and get our enrollment numbers, and we'll probably start finding out way more information about Esser 2 grants and Esser 3 grants, then we will do an amendment and change our budget and update it for more accurate information. So I'm going to do our student activities budget for fiscal year 21 and fiscal year 22. For fiscal year 21, for our student activities, we are projecting to have revenues of $35,271 with some student activity expenditures of $32,000, $32,777. This is, we will increase our fund balance for student activities by $2,494. So this is left because, of course, with us not being face-to-face, we weren't able to do all the things that were initially planned to do with the students. And we weren't able to do all the fundraising activities that we would normally do in a face-to-face environment. So for next year, just being conservative, you know, we'll, we'll say, again, this is just an estimate. And once we have more information, we'll make updates that we expect to spend 15, to raise $15,000 and to spend the $15,000 for student activities. And so there will be a net zero impact to the fund balance for student activities. So now is the truth in taxation that we have to share with the public, and we also need to have approved by the board. This is our L4029. This is so that we can ensure that the, the millages that we levy for, for taxes, that we can receive our, our local revenue, which is the revenue that we get from the city of Flint for taxes, and then also the amount that goes into our debt fund so we can pay our debt that we have, that we did a millage for, and then the amount that comes to the district for the sinking fund. So this is where I was making reference to, that you see that the sinking fund is, we leveraged 1.18 meals and normally, and then we split out 2.82 for the debt. And previously, the sinking fund received the entire four meals. So we just split it between the sinking fund and to pay the debt that the, the district previously had. So I would like to be able to have, Letitia, can you please unmute herself so she can go over the food service budgets for 21 and 22?
Okay. For fiscal year 21 and 22, we should have a slide.
They don't have a problem with it because they don't have a problem. They don't.
Danielle, you not muted?
I muted her.
Tish, you okay? Go ahead.
Thank you. For the fiscal year 2021 final budget, I think our revenues are going to be 4.688 million. That's coming from your local, state, and federal sources. We got a little bit of an increase, and that increase is due to the fact that we received some funds. We received 31D, which came in in April. It was a one-time payment for $21,000. We also received 31F, which was 96.5. That also came in April. We were not aware we were going to receive those funds, so they were never budgeted in there. They came in late in the year. So it was a late year change. So I'm picking it up with this final amendment. The expenses, I anticipate being at $3,926.50. And that is due to, when we initially did that winter amendment, we budgeted for some heating bills and things like that. Those heating bills didn't come in as much as they thought they were going to be. And so the, so the EXO bills are a little bit lower than what we anticipated. The ending fund balance, we have more revenues than we do expenditures, gives us a positive fund balance there for operating. That's $742,000. And that leaves us, at the end of the year, 2.078535. I'm sorry, 2.098535. For the 21, 22, I anticipate us being, it's going to be a little bit higher for our local sources. That's because I anticipate that we're going to be face-to-face, being face-to-face, we're going to be able to draw in a little bit different revenues. Kids will be back in the building, staff will be able to purchase food, things of that nature. So we'll have a little bit increase in there. The state sources, I anticipate a little bit of a decrease there, just again, because of our student count decreasing, that does have an effect on our capabilities of our state aid and also being able to serve food. Same thing with our federal sources, those lower numbers will have a direct effect on that as well. Operations and maintenance, I anticipate an increase, about $20,000 there. And then our food service, the overall, I anticipate about $30,000 increase. And I do want to remind the board that when you see those numbers, they're not just EXO bills. They're consisting of, for like operation and maintenance, you're looking at water, sewer, electricity, licensing, like there's different license and fees that we have to pay. Sometimes there's repair that needs to be done within the facility to keep the kitchens operational. Those are the type of things that go into operation and maintenance. So I do want to disclose that. And then the food service, that 3.7 million is not just EXO bills, while a large portion of it is. It's not everything. We still have water, I'm sorry, not water. You're going to have transportation cost in there. You're going to have different type, you're going to have EXO, you have like copy machines, you're going to have supplies, you're going to have miscellaneous services like pest control, which are all part of food service operations. So please understand when you see that 3.7, it is not just an EXO bills. Again, I anticipate that we're going to have more revenues than expenditures, so we'll be operating in a positive, ending the fiscal year for 21, 22 at 2.5 million. I anticipate, there's a lot of movement too in the food service, you know, with grants and things coming forward. So I'm keeping up on that and hoping that next year when we do our amendment, our first amendment, I'll have a little bit more information and be able to increase some of those revenues if we can get some grants in for it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Tish.
Yeah.
So now I'm going to open it up to questions from the board or the public.
Does any board members have any questions?
I mean, I do, but I'm just waiting to see if anybody else has questions.
Well, ask your questions, Ms. Laura. Can you make them very direct, please, ma'am?
This, yes, I will make them as direct as, as they can be, but there's a lot of questions, given the amount of information that, that we've received that does need clarification. So Ms. Lompre, on your second page of your PowerPoint presentation of the budget development, you have district staffing. I'm sorry, is somebody muted? I mean, just, okay. District staffing, salary plus benefits, represents approximately 58, 56% of the budget. Is there some way that you Um is there some way that you could be more specific about this? Uh what what is included in staffing? Can you make a breakdown of administration versus teaching versus maintenance? I mean, staffing can, I I don't really know what you're talking about. Um if we could maybe have some categories or some columns. Uh and then if salary is very different from benefits, if we could please have you differentiate between salary and benefits. Because it's my understanding that they go in different line items anyway. So in order to have an idea of what the fifty six percent is, could we have it broken down into uh more discrete categories, please? Uh the same thing with the contract staff, uh could we could we have more of an itemized line of of what that thirteen percent entails? And in terms of the fringe benefits, it's it's, I know that there's some overlap with human resources. But um uh I found it helpful uh looking at at other board budgets. That if there's perhaps an appendix that could be shared between the departments, that way it can be included in in all of the reports and referred to. So that we just don't have a a a a PowerPoint with bullet with bullet points, maybe something that you can say refer to appendix. You know, A, for example, um so that we'd know exactly what you're referring to. And that might be a an easier way to kind of make sense of some of these uh some of this data. Uh so then on the your PowerPoint, at least in mine. My copy does not have pages, so I'm one, two, three on the third page of your PowerPoint presentation. Where it says budget development process continued.
I'm sorry, Ms. McIntyre. Are you asking me to answer these questions right this moment? Or are you asking me to provide some information to you at another time?
Well, I I would like these, I it would be very nice to have maybe a succinct answer if you could provide them. Um I understand if you're not able to at this time, but I would also like them in writing. And I do think it's important to have these things in an official end of the year uh report. Uh especially for a school district the size of of Flint, um to you know, to have this kind of thing included. Um it would be very, very helpful. So I mean, do you? Before I go further onto page three, do you have anything you'd like to say about the the first two pages of questions?
So your your first question asked me what categories does the fifty six percent make up? This um this is the all staff, that would be, I'm sorry.
Uh okay, go, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So um this would be all district staff, this would be executives. Um um members that work at the um. Administration building that are part of Congress, this would be our professionals, our technicals, our teachers, our parents. So those are all people that are district staff. And for the purposes of um we calculate benefits to be, I'm just giving you a rough number, to be roughly fifty percent of a person's salary. So if someone was, their salary was twenty five thousand, their benefits are calculated at roughly fifty percent. The benefits includes medical, um dental, um is, I'm sorry, includes medical. It includes FICA, Medicare and their retirement. That's what's considered in um benefits. And we also do include the cost of dental and vision, life insurance and LTD. Those are the things that make up fringe benefits.
Okay, um so would you be able to provide a breakdown of the staff? According to category, like for example, administration, teachers, paraproses? So that we have an idea of what our administrator to teacher ratio is?
So, okay, that is not something that I'm prepared to give to you this evening, but I can work on providing this information.
Okay, and 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 please, please forgive me, I'm I'm just asking for some basic clarification. When you say that you're going to work on providing this for me, what does that mean?
So that means that in the in the way that you would like this information broken out, I do not have that available at this time. So I have to get with my staff so that we can put together the information in the format in which you are requesting it. So to be perfectly honest with you, this is not something that I can provide you tomorrow. I have to get in the office and work with my staff and try to manage the 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 other um deliverables that we have. And try to find the time period to ensure that we have it. So I am not trying to commit to telling you what day I can have it, because I don't wanna be able to miss a deadline that I provide you. So I'm asking you to give me the opportunity to go back and to work on the information. And then I can, once I go back and talk to my staff, I can communicate with you via email when I can provide that information. Is that fair?
You have a a a window, maybe a timeframe perhaps, so that we can be on the same page with this in terms of uh the timeliness of this? Cause I know that that's been a a a a point of misunderstanding in the past.
So um again, um treasurer, I don't wanna tell you a day and a time, because I don't want to be held to it if I can't commit to it. Is that fair?
I I, yes, it's fair for not a day and a time, but I I'm asking maybe for a a a window. Like, is it next year? Is it in five years?
No, it's not next year and no, it's not five years.
So do you have a a window?
About a week or a week. Can I can I say a week? I I'm just, I'm afraid, I'm gonna be perfectly honest with you, I'm afraid to tell you a day and if I can't make that day, that's gonna be held against me. I'm not.
Excuse me, excuse me, order, order. Ms. Don Pray, as long as you get the information to her and you're working on it, I think. Just stop in. I think it'll be fine as far as it's in a, you know. If you say a week, a week and three days, I don't think she's gonna get worked up over extra three days or what have you. Thank you. Um any to us, Ms. Laura?
Uh oh, yes, yes, um. Didn't we ask for, uh it, there was some talk about the contracts? And like I said, there's some overlap here between between the budget and the and I guess human resources, but um.
Okay.
Hey, hey, wait a minute, uh there there's there's several pages here that we just have, it's, there are, there are some questions. I mean, I I understand that you want me to be quick about this, but I just. I have, I have my, I mean, I don't understand what you want from me, President McIntosh with um. I I I mean, I have questions about the budget. I am the treasurer. And this is the first opportunity that I've had to to ask these specific direct ones and to to, you know, attempt to get some information.
So my question was. My question was gonna be, can Ms. Don Pray, uh once she gets, can, once she, once she gets the answers to your questions. Can you and her set up an email, Zoom or Zoom meeting? And work applicably together to get this done?
I would hope so, yeah.
May I ask, Ms. Laura, it appears that you have quite a few questions. And I don't wanna not capture the information properly. Is it possible that you could email me your question so that way I can make sure that we answer everything that you're asking for? Because as you stated, you have several questions and I don't want to um not provide the information to you. But I need to have all the questions that you have so we can ensure that we provide the correct answers to you.
Um.
That way we can have it in writing and we can both be on the same page.
Ms. Laura?
I, okay, so that's a request that is. That I would like to be able to try to accommodate, but I need to be met halfway, um at least halfway. Uh because. Emails for me are very, very difficult, as I've stated before, because of my disability.
Just one second. Can she write it and give it to you, Ms. Ayana? Sorry for interrupting, Ms. Laura. Can she handwrite it?
Yes, that will be fine. I just want it in writing so that we will be able to ensure that we accommodate her request.
Okay, so Ms. Laura.
Part of it is not, part of it is the the it it's without going into into my disability. This this email thing has been very, very stressful and and hostile. Um because of the way that the email chains have been going back and forth. I do not, uh I limit. That, no, I need, I need face, maybe we could have a meeting with somebody there who can who can be taking notes. Um so that I don't have to constantly go back and forth, you know, fifty times a day on an email chain. Um I don't have the capacity to do that. So if I could sit down and have, you know, a face to face meeting and have somebody take notes, then I would be willing to do that.
Ms. 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 Um.
Ask my questions right now.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. We do have issues with you and Ms. Ayana, so I'm trying to come up with a a fair and equitable agreement. Why, can you write your questions down on paper? Give her an opportunity to vet them and get the information. At that time, if you have further questions, can you uh then do a Zoom meeting with her? To, and you can ask a question over Zoom, can't you?
Yes, I can, I can ask questions over Zoom and somebody can write it down.
Okay.
I'm 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 tired of of sending these emails and not, and and the wordplay that's going into them and not getting an answer back and forth. And having to write five more clarifying emails to explain what it is that I meant the first time. So I'm not willing to do that, no. I will sit down and have a meeting and have somebody take notes.
So I just.
Okay, I'm.
That I all respond to your emails.
Okay, what is going to happen in this instance, hold on, order, order, order. What is going to happen in this instance is you're going to give your questions to, you're gonna, Mo is gonna take your notes, uh Laura. And she's gonna give them to Ayana and she will be the go go between for this note taking in this exchange. Once the exchange is happened, this Laura, any future questions or any dialogue that you may need to have with Ms. Don Pray can be conducted over a Zoom meeting.
What about the questions that I have emailed previously that have yet to be answered?
Well, 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 wait a minute, we not discussing that right now. We we, you asked about this budget and she's accommodating you. So can we move on?
Yes, that is true. And but I have asked questions about this budget previously. That, am I going to have to repeat my question?
Write all your questions down, whatever your questions are.
Everything, okay, all right, understood.
Mo is gonna write, Mo is gonna write them. So can you at least read them off to, tell them to Mo so she can write them?
There's, there's an extensive email chain of questions that I've asked, yes, that are, they already exist.
Thank you, thank you. Is there any other questions as it pertains to the budget?
So how how is this going to work then if if I am being requested to wait? To ask my questions and we're being asked to vote on the budget right now?
You have every right to turn it down or to agree to it. I can't tell you how to deal with that. Is there any more questions from the board as it pertains to the budget?
I do just want to say for the record, there are several discrepancies and several um concerns that I do have about some of the line items. And so I do need to say that, that I don't, I just think at this time it's.
Point them out. If you have discrepancies and you see errors, point them out.
You just told me to write them down and have Mo med- uh mediate.
Well, you said your questions, but if you found an error, feel free to point it out. Is there any other questions from any other board members? Are you done, Ms. McIntyre? Or are you gonna point those out? Are you gonna want us to come back to you?
Um. I I I'm just not, I'm not sure it's, it'll be really fruitful at this point to to express some of the concerns that I have. But I I do still have some very serious, serious concerns about this budget.
Well, feel free to speak on your concerns. We're talking about your additional questions, Laura, that she's not equipped to answer right now.
No, that's okay. I'm done for right now.
Okay, is there any other board members that would like to ask any questions as it pertains to the budget?
I have a question, Carol, President McIntyre.
Yes, please go ahead, Ms. Green.
Okay, my question is, I listened to Ms. Don Pray and thank you for that presentation. My question is basically, as information comes in, numbers may change. And that'll be presented to the board as that happens? Is that what I'm understanding?
So when information comes in after we have our student count, um that's when we'll be able to make an amendment and that will come before the board.
Okay, okay, I just, and I kinda knew that, but I just wanted to make sure um I was. And also, as Laura being the treasurer, I would like to really hear her concerns. I know we, she can't do her questions now. But I would like to, her concerns are because she's the treasurer. And when I was treasurer, I had a little deeper dive because I was dealing with it on a on weekly basis. So I would really like to know what your concerns are, or maybe you bring something to my attention that I missed.
Right.
Sorry, what was that last part, Carol? I couldn't, or not Carol, uh Danielle, I didn't understand the last.
My attention that I overlooked or didn't see.
Well, I mean, like I said, I have, I have a lot and I just uh. You know, some of these discrepancies, I started out talking about some of the discrepancies and 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 I feel like I was shut down. Um and being told to, you know, ask.
No, you're not. But please get to the point. Uh I'm sorry, that is, I'm out.
Okay, so. Sorry?
Hi, Laura McIntyre, this is uh uh Ms. McNell, how you doing?
Good.
You know, we do have option to pass or not approve. And you are the treasurer, yes, you have some concerns. And it appears that um it's not your fault because everything is just thrown in our life at the last minute. And we can't address all this stuff because we don't get these in a timely manner. And and it's important that we get these in a timely manner, so we gonna have these type of discussion. So now we at a crossroad here, you know, so um and the biggest question is, can this budget get approved with all these questions? And that's the decision that the board would have to make. And that will save a lot of time so that you can get these questions done. We've been trying to get this stuff done uh for the longest. So now we at this dead end, this crossroad, and everybody want us to do everything and snap your finger and jump. So what are we going to do from here? It's seven twenty now. Um and this, and we got a long agenda. So could we just put this on hold and go to the next and come back and and make a decision about something? I'll, I'll, right here, and I don't think we can stay right here because it's not going anywhere. So that would be my suggestion and somebody else can think of something else. But um uh trustee Danielle Green is correct. I wants to hear a thing. I wants to learn. Because I said as the alternate person uh from this um McIntyre, I need to know what's going on. And right now I don't. So maybe we can put this on hold and move on it. And cause we had a standstill right here and we can be here all night if just on this, because we, it's not our fault, the board, that we're stuck with this.
So may I, may I make a statement, please?
Yes.
So, um usually. usually, if there's challenges that would be taken care of in the finance subcommittee, and, um, that's usually the opportunity that we take to deal with questions and concerns in the finance subcommittee, and, um, I didn't know that there were so many challenges and discrepancies um, that the treasurer had with this budget, so this is new information for me tonight. According to state law, we have to adopt a budget before July first, and, which is June thirtieth. And this is our last board meeting for the school year. So.
If, if I may, in the last finance.
I'm sorry. We have to make a decision, yes or no, tonight on a budget.
In the finance subcommittee meeting, this was not, this information was not available. It was scrolled across our screens in a PowerPoint presentation. It was then subsequently given to us in writing. We haven't had ample time to go over it. In, in the subcommittee meeting, I did express concerns that this is exactly what was going to happen. And since then, I've been trying to alleviate some of the, the, trying to, you know, take care of some of this with, with emails in between, but I have been stymied in my requests for information with almost every single email. And so I do not have the information I need to move forward to make that request. And, I mean, I can start pointing out mistakes and errors, I can go page by page if you would like, but we did not have the time to do this in the subcommittee finance meeting, which was exactly my point when we had the subcommittee finance meeting. And then the, and I think Dr. McNeil suggested that if, you know, since we weren't able to discuss it, it would just come forward to the, to the regular board meeting, and then we would talk about it here. And here we are. And yet we're not, you know, we don't have enough time to talk about it, and now there's a deadline that we've got to pass this, this, this budget that I have been requesting for, for a while. And so we don't have enough information and enough time to do this. And it's, it's like Dr. McNeil said, it's no fault of the boards. You know, we just, we just are put in an untenable situation yet again.
So am I hearing you guys say, ask the question, is that unreadiness, and you choose to table discussion? And set a special meeting? What, what am I hearing from the board? Are you guys saying you're not, uh, should we, maybe we should just take a vote? Should we just take a vote?
I think so.
Yes.
Okay, then somebody needs to ask the question, and that's all you have to say is call for the question?
Call for the question?
Okay, um, at this time, let me get to that page of my, and so.
Point of order.
Yes, ma'am.
When you call for the question, there must be a second, then you vote on call for the question, and then you go to the fir, to the motion.
Yes, thank you. So we need a, a second for the call to the question. Is that right, Ms. Perry?
Second.
Okay, it has been.
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, it has been, uh, moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion? Which we've had discussion, but is there any discussion?
There's no discussion. Once the call for the question, you immediately go straight to the vote.
Okay, so now we're in the vote. Uh, Treasurer McIntyre.
And you're voting on calling for the question?
And which is to accept or deny the, the budget, right?
No, ma'am.
And discussion.
Call for the question, to stop discussion.
Right. Oh, so that, we have to vote to stop discussion, is what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Perry. Okay, so, um, at this time, I'll take a roll call vote. Uh, Treasurer McIntyre?
Oh, okay.
Yes. Go ahead.
But I think McIntyre would like to further the discussion, it's not to just end the discussion, is that what I'm understanding this vote is for?
It ends the discussion for, for tonight.
Oh, okay, and then we move to the next, but she can always come back to this. Later.
I guess.
Not tonight, that's what you're saying?
Yeah.
So that would put our budget off being approved then, is that what I'm hearing, Ms. Perry?
No, because then after you get whatever you're gonna get for call for the question, then you still move to the, uh, uh, the motion, the fir, the motion to accept the budget, and then it will either be voted up or voted down.
So we're calling for the question to end discussion, then we'll move the, move for action on the budget. Is that a proper understanding? Okay, so, um, so are we calling for the question? We had a, yes, we had a, uh, a, yes, and a second, just been properly supported. So Treasurer McIntyre to end, this is to end discussion, yes or no?
There was a call for the question, there was a motion and a second, you must take a roll call vote.
Okay, and I'm taking a roll call vote, and I call the, and the roll call vote is just to simply end discussion, right? That's what we said, right?
That's correct.
Making sure. Okay, Treasurer McIntyre. Yes or no?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I couldn't, I can, okay, Treasurer Wright.
Yes, to end the discussion.
Vice President Perry.
Yes.
Assistant Secretary Treasurer McNeil.
Yes.
Rusty Walker.
Yes.
Secretary Green. And myself, yes. Now we need a motion to accept or to turn down the budget. Right, Ms. Perry? Point of orders, I heard.
But I thought we already had done that, but yes.
No, you did not. This was the end of her presentation. She asked if any board members had any questions.
So you, you're right, you're right. So yeah, you need a motion.
So can I?
If I may, Mrs. McIntyre, I do have a public comment, uh, regarding.
Okay, yes, okay, yes, please do, Stephen, I'm sorry. Stephen?
Yep, sorry about that. Trying to get my stuff in order here.
Okay.
Okay, I have a comment from Betty, I apologize, my toddler's sugared up. Uh, okay, well, I have a couple more hands being raised, we have at least three. So starting first with, uh, Betty Nostrant. Uh, Betty, you are unmuted on my end, and you may begin when you are ready.
Thank you.
And please state, and please state your name and address for the record, ma'am.
My name is Betty Nostrant, I live at eight fourteen Hubbard in Flint, Michigan. I am wanting to know a couple of things about this budget. Um, one, how much of the budget is going to special education? And how much of an increase is special education going to get for services that they, that these children have not been provided all year this year? I, I need to know that there is a budget for this in particular. Um, and also, uh, for increased instructional time, which they take more than the average child to get back up to par with other children. So they're gonna need, you know, double to triple what a normal child is going to need to get back up to par. So is that instructional time in this budget or not? That's my worry.
Thank you.
And that's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, next we have Claire McClinton. Claire, you are unmuted on my end. Feel free to unmute yourself and begin when you are ready.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Sorry, Claire, I'm, I'm not hearing you. Uh, I do show you unmuted, though.
Okay, maybe we can go to the next, um, person and come back to Ms. McClinton, possibly, if she can get strained out.
Yes, next I have, uh, Arthur, excuse me, Arthur Woodson.
Please state your name and address for the, yes, please state your name and address for the record, Mr. Woodson.
My name is Arthur Woodson, four zero two, West Stewart. I have a couple of questions for the budget. Uh, how much money, uh, did we, or are we getting from G I S D, uh, for special needs? And also, do we receive, uh, center-based dollars? Uh, is that in the budget? And I was listening, but I, I, I don't know if I truly understood what Ms. Dupree were saying, and I was wondering if she can, uh, clarify for me. Did she say that we had, uh, money here? But she couldn't add it in because they didn't know how to spend it? So they was gonna add it in next year? I just needed clarification, I didn't know for sure. And if that was the case, why couldn't we add it in and, uh, this year budget? And figure out how to spend it, I mean, figure out how to spend it later on this year, whatever, but it's in this budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, let's try Claire again. Claire, you are unmuted on my end, and it appears you're in, so you may begin when you're ready. Appears Claire's having some issues with the microphone. Okay, let me do one final check. It appears to be, oh, sorry, I do have one more. Couple more, I apologize, this, we have quite a few attendees, I gotta filter through.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, next here we have, uh, Felicia Neymark. Uh, Felicia, you are on my end. There you go. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Felicia Neymark, twelve eighty-five Brenner Pass, Clio, Michigan. I am a speech-language pathologist with the district working at Durant-Turry-Mott. And my question is, um, if I am not mistaken, the board could call a special meeting to discuss the budget if there are questions? Is that something the board would consider so that you're not under the gun to pass or, um, put, turn down a budget tonight, but perhaps consider um, tabling it and calling a special board meeting to discuss the budget after some of your questions can be answered? Thank you very much.
Thank you, headphones.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, one more here, looks like we have a question from Lizzie Fairchild. Uh, Fairchild, you are unmuted on my end. Feel free to unmute yourself and begin when you are ready. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
It's Lizzie Fairchild, ten thousand, I mean, ten, ten, Stewart. My question is, I didn't understand the budget because that's not my expertise. My question is so basic, I am so concerned about the third graders didn't have school, and what is gonna happen to them as it relates to reading? Are, is there something in place specifically for what happens? For the third graders, for the Flint Public School this year? A, and all the children as far as that goes, but that's the year where we talk about students don't, if they're not reading by the third grade, they're not gonna catch up. And that is a big concern, and I don't want this to be delayed. I would like to have a question answered about that, since it's not so budget-specific, but it's more student-specific. And the other thing is, the technology that's used to get on this is like, um, an aptitude test. There's gotta be a better way to get the public involved and not have this process. The technology is too difficult, and it shouldn't be that difficult. And that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, let's see. We'll give Claire one more try here.
Okay.
Claire, uh, you are unmuted. Any luck this time? Okay, appears not. Uh, Claire, if you would, please just comment, uh, in onto the questions tab, and I will forward that to the board. Um, and after that, I believe, just one more check. That is all for the questions and public comment this time.
For President, can I, for President, I have a clarifying question, please?
Yes, please do.
So you, you called for the question and you guys voted on the question. But did you ever vote on passing or not passing this budget tonight?
No, we haven't.
Okay, so I was confused because we went to public comments. So will there be a vote on?
We were, I'm sorry about that, uh, Superintendent Stewart, we were supposed to, public comments, uh, earlier, I don't.
The public is about the budget, yes.
Yes, and it says up here, and I think we may have gotten to the budget and went to, went into our ask the question and skipped over giving the, uh, public an opportunity. So we haven't voted on the budget, and that is what we need to figure out as a board, are we, I, um, I was thinking of tabling it as well. I don't know if that is the pleasure of the board, though. Um, so I guess I would have to find out what is the, is, do we want to vote on this? The vote to ask the question, uh, everybody voted to ask the question. Now, we need to vote, are we tabling, we need to decide are we tabling the discussion, or are we voting on it? Period.
I would like to make a motion to suggest that we have a special meeting to be able to ask and answer questions in detail about the budget before we, uh, are required to vote on it.
So you are ma, making a motion for a budget workshop?
A special budget meeting to discuss this budget for approval.
Okay, does she have any support?
So moved.
She moved, she needs support.
Support.
A second.
I'm sorry.
It has been properly moved and seconded that we had a special budget meeting to, over the budget. Uh, are there any questions as it pertains to this? The motion to move, uh, has been, the, uh, question has, it has been moved and properly seconded, uh, that we have a special board meeting as I. Uh, that we have a special board meeting, as I call your name. Say yes or no to approve this special meeting. Treasurer McIntyre?
Yes.
Trustee Wright?
No.
Vice President Perry?
No.
Assistant Secretary Treasurer McNeil?
Yes.
Trustee Walker?
Yes.
Secretary Green?
Yes.
And myself, it's a yes. Five yeses, two noes, the motion passes. So now we have to set a date for the special board meeting. I think we could probably do that outside of the meeting. The motion passes. This concludes the special budget presentation portion of the agenda. We will now move into our regular board meeting.
This is McIntyre, if I may, I apologize.
Yeah.
Uh, Claire did type her question out and I just wanted to read it just to make sure she's heard. Um, her request, her comment reads, please have special meetings regarding the federal money. This is our money. And that concludes your comment, I believe, at this time. Sorry for the interruption.
That's okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Claire. Um, at this time, I would like to entertain a motion in a second to approve the minutes in batch from May 17th, 2021, the academic subcommittee meeting. May 19th, 2021, regular board meeting. May 26th, 2021, special board meeting. June 7th, 2021, finance and operations subcommittee meeting. June 9th, 2021, special board meeting and June 9th, 2021, board committee of the whole meeting.
I'm moved.
I need some, okay.
Thanks.
It has been properly moved and seconded that we approved the minutes. Are there any corrections?
Yes, I would like to separate the June 7th, 2021, finance and operations subcommittee meeting minutes to make corrections.
Um.
Or to have discussion and corrections.
Is there any support?
Support.
It has been moved and properly supported that we, um, take June 7th, 2021, finance and operations subcommittee meeting minutes from the batch for corrections? And what, what needs to be corrected? Is there, what's the problem, Laura?
Um, let me go to that page. I would like to, uh, clarify some of the items in the budget presentation notes.
We're listening.
Um, there's, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find the.
I think they was in your last minute notes on that day. You had some questions on that date.
Um, I, I asked for clarifications regarding budget coding and a written explanation of the increases and decreases in the budget. And I would like to have that highlighted or clarified in some way because there seems to be an awful lot of confusion about that.
Wait, wait, is that a correction to the, we're talking about corrections to the minutes. Is that, is it a misprint or something? Because if you have questions, we have a special, well, I don't know, maybe you can send that with your.
Separated, um.
Put that with that, uh, the meeting we have with the other budget, since it relates to budget.
But can we separate it from approval?
If, these are just to accept the minutes. If it is a, if it's an error in the minutes, this is to correct that. This isn't to approve an action. The action is to accept the minutes, but if the minutes are wrong, then we have to correct them. But if you are looking for something additional, that has nothing to do with the minutes being corrected.
Okay, retract my separation.
Okay.
Oh, now I have to, okay, uh. Okay, Mo, what's my next move? Because do I have to add this back in now or we accept the minutes as they are? And she withdraws her motion, so motion has been withdrawn. Is there any other corrections? Or do I have to vote to draw, withdraw her? Mo, do I have, do we have to vote to withdraw her motion?
No.
Okay, um, are there any other corrections to the minutes? Seeing the motion to approve the minutes in batch will be conducted by a roll call vote. As I call your name, please say yes or no. Vice President Perry?
Yes.
Secretary Green?
Yes.
Treasurer McIntyre?
Yes.
Assistant Secretary Treasurer McNeil?
Yes.
Trustee Walker?
Yes.
Trustee Wright?
Yes.
And myself, it's a yes for me. The motion passes, seven yes. At this time, the board will hear any comments from the public regarding agenda items. Members of the public are recommended, are reminded that the Board of Education by its bylaws 1370 are not obligated to answer questions, make statements or comments in response to issues raised by the public in general. Such issues will be referred to the Superintendent for Investigation Study of Recommendation. Any public members wishing to speak regarding the agenda items may raise their hand or submit their name in the chat to alert Stephen that you wanna speak. Also, anyone who sent an email prior to today's meeting will have that read. Public members, Stephen will call your name before you are unmuted to speak. Please restate your name and address before you begin speaking. Stephen, do you have anyone that wishes to address?
Well, again, yes, I do have a couple of hands raised.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, starting first was Arthur Woodson. Mr. Woodson, you are unmuted again at my end. Please unmute yourself.
Hello.
For, read the record.
Yes, uh, name is Arthur Woodson, 402 West Stewart. I'm looking at the agenda, 21.33 authorization for public relations service contract. Uh, public relations.
I do it all the time, but I just.
Ms. Green, green.
Ms. Green, I apologize. Could you click the mute button on your phone? Ms. Green?
I'm trying, give me a minute.
Sorry.
I don't know, I'm on my phone now, so I'm not sure how to do it. You can't do this, Stephen, because I don't know how to do it.
If you're on a, if you're on a phone call, there should be just, it should be a mute button.
I can usually, but it's not. You know what, y'all, it's not there. Stephen, just, can you do it?
Unfortunately, this program does not allow me to mute phone callers.
Okay, I'm not sure then. I don't know. Okay, let me just say I'll be quiet, how about that? Because it's not giving me that option to mute nothing. If the button is there, it's just, I can't go, oh, wait, wait, hold on, I put something, it came up, it came up live now, because it wasn't live, okay.
Okay, I think we're okay. Please, let's continue, Mr. Woodson.
That is fine with us. We need a interruption.
Please continue, Mr. Woodson.
All right. Uh, the, uh, extend public relations service contract. Uh, the PR, uh, isn't working. I don't even think they need to extend. I mean, I could, I could have did that job, uh, for free. Uh, they, they're not any good. I wouldn't extend theirs. I, I think I would look out, I'd look for someone else. Uh, Ms. Dupree, in that, uh, budget, uh, can you tell us how much we are paying G I S D for disability or special needs transportation to G I S D? The 21.36 extending, uh, school bus transportation service agreement. I was, it just reminded me to ask you that question. Uh, how much are we paying to G I S D for, uh, transportation? Um, Ms. Stewart? 25.15 authorization to extend head start lease agreements with Genesee Intermediate School District. This has been a real big, huge issue with me. Uh, Governor Snyder took Beecher, Flint and Carmen Ainsworth, the three black districts, school districts, and gave it to G I S D worth 13 point some odd dollars. Why would we extend head start lease? I don't know if it's, you know, benefiting us that way. But why won't we sue the G I S D for racial discrimination or the state? For that matter, racial discrimination. Because they took the, the head start, early childhood from our district, only the black districts. They didn't take it from Clio, they didn't take it from Davison, they didn't take it from Grand Blank. They took it from us and laid off our teachers, our people in our district. And we're gonna turn around and sign or extend a head start lease to the overseers? That's how I see them, overseer. So I wouldn't authorize anything. What I would authorize is for our lawyers to sue the state and G I S D for discrimination for taking head start from only the black districts. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, sir. Uh, up next, uh, we have Betty Nostrand. Uh, Betty, I will unmute you on my end. Once you're unmuted, please state your name and address and you may begin.
I'm, my name's Betty Nostrand. I live at 814 Hubbard. Um, I also have issues with 25.15. I am severely concerned about, first of all, the fact that we do not have our own head start preschool program and we are leasing this out. And we are losing money and children that should be in our school systems. We are also, I also have an issue with the other programs for special education that are given to G I S D. Why aren't these programs in our schools? Where the children are with, at least in the same schools as their peers? And not, um, school buses going all over the county to get these programs that they should be getting in our school district. We are paying G I S D to take care of these students. And we are failing not only the students, but our school district also by taking these children out of our school district, basically. Why are we doing this? We talk about losing students while we're losing students every day from this.
Yep.
So I just wanna know why. I've been looking into being your next PAC for G I S. I don't understand it. And I will be honest, I have looked at all of our mandatory plans and so forth and I do not understand why this is. The only one this is helping is it's helping to fund G I S D at the cost of Flint and its students. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Lizzie Fairchild. Lizzie, unmute you on my end. Please begin with your name and address for the record.
Lizzie Fairchild, and I still live on 100 Stewart. And what I'm calling about this time is the idea that we would put preschoolers on a bus in a city the size of Flint and ship them out of the city for head start or for anything as far as that goes, means we don't care about our babies. That is just an inhumane experience for little ones to have that. The culture at G I S D is not going to be accepting of my little babies. And I am very, very, very concerned about their cultural competencies. I believe that they're lacking. And I am wishing the board to take the human side of these things. I know it was very heavy on the budget tonight, but there has to be a more humanistic approach to our children. And like I said, I am so worried about this whole year where the children were not having experience on their traditional education, not that I totally believe in traditional education, but we pretty much abandoned the children in so many ways. The city of Flint suffers from a lack of Wi-Fi or broadband experiences. And if we don't have that, which we don't, and how many children were abandoned by our Board of Education? I mean, I would like to see some very quick research on that kind of thing. We've got to love our babies better than we're doing. We are not just a board to manage, uh, adults and budgets. The children need so much from us the next couple of years in terms of their care and concern and support. And I don't know when you guys are gonna ever get around to answering the questions of the public. I understand this in your rules, but there has to be somebody in that setting that can say, we do have a plan for the third graders. We do have a plan for preschoolers to stay in the city. We do have a plan for something. Doesn't have to be detailed, but it certainly can give the parents an idea that there is something there available for the children. After all, we're all here because of the children. Unless we've lost sight of that, I don't know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll do one last check. All right, Board President, that appears to be all of the public comments at this time.
Um, okay, uh. Board members, I will proceed with the agenda. Now we'll receive the superintendent's comm, UK, from Ms. Stewart.
Good evening. With the final day of school year here, I continue to be inspired and motivated by the focus of our students, families and staff. Although this school year has been unlike any other, I have seen firsthand how the school community has worked together to overcome the challenges we face and grow stronger. We recently held an in-person graduation ceremony for the class of 2021 and would be remiss to not take a moment to recognize the achievements of our incredible seniors. This last year and a half may have been the most challenging time in their lives, but despite it all, our scholars pushed forward. Our scholars logged onto class, found a way to connect and preserve and persevere. We celebrated roughly 50 seniors who walked across the stage to complete their educational journey at Flint Community Schools. We cannot wait to see all they achieve in the future. We are grateful to our teachers, mentors, mentors, partners, community members and you, the Board of Education, for helping our scholars cross the finish line. As one year comes to a close, preparations for the next are well underway. To that end, enrollment efforts continue with several activities taking place across the district. Flint Community Schools will offer onsite K through 12 enrollment for the 21-22 school year from June 29th through July 14th. We ask that interested. We ask that interested families bring a birth certificate, immunization records, three proofs of residency, and if a child is enrolling from another district, grades, behavior history, and attendance records. Please email enrollments@flintschools.org or call eight one zero seven six seven six one 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 with questions. Other enrollment activities include neighborhood canvassing, which will take place on Friday, June eighteenth. Administrators and teams from each school will visit our neighborhoods and thank those families who remain with the district and work diligently this year to ensure their child participated in their educational program. Additionally, Freeman, Pierce, and Doyle Rider are hosting end-of-school-year drives to close out a successful school year. This will give us an opportunity to retain and recruit families. While there has been much to celebrate this school year, we do want to take a moment to recognize the loss of one of our scholars who recently passed. It is with great sorrow and sadness that we share this news. The loss of someone so young with so much potential is always the hardest. Let us please take a moment of silence and extend our sympathies to the family and friends of our scholar who attended Nevekut Elementary School. We would not be, we would not be where we are today without, without the heart and warmth of our scholars. Please keep this family and their loved ones in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you. This concludes my commuke. Thank you.
My apologies, Mrs. Stewart. My audio dropped out. I just wanted to make sure that, make sure I'm not the only one for probably the last thirty seconds of your, of your commuke.
Okay, I'm, I'm not, do you, King, tell me what, what was the last part that you heard?
I, I'm very sorry. I, I do not recall.
I heard it all.
Okay. Okay, I just want to make sure it's only me. Okay. Disregard, I apologize. Ms. McIntosh, you are muted if you are speaking.
Okay, just a second. I'm trying to get. Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Okay, we're moving on to new business action items. Board members, I would now like to entertain a motion in a second to approve the following action items in batch that were moved from the June ninth, two thousand and twenty-one Board Committee of a Whole Meeting, which was the Human Resources Action Item one point eleven through one point four.
So moved, so moved.
Second.
Okay. And we're approving them in batch, and I also need to strike out the finance and operations portion, which would be eleven point eight through eleven point fourteen. So strike that out. So the rest of it, I need motion and support.
You've received it. Now you can call.
Okay, thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that we approve the action items from June ninth, two thousand and twenty-one Board Call Meeting. Are there any questions? Seeing the motion to approve the action items, including the corrections to the resolution, twenty-one point twenty-five will be conducted by a roll call vote. As I call your name, please say yes or no to approve. Vice President Perry?
Yes.
Secretary Green?
Yes.
Treasurer McIntyre?
No.
Assistant Secretary Treasurer McNeil?
I'm a little confused. Are you, are you at one point one to one point fourteen? And you're striking out one point eleven point eight to eleven point fourteen?
I'm striking out eleven point eight to eleven point fourteen, and I'm accepting the rest of it in batch.
Oh, okay. I support, yes.
Okay. Trustee Walker?
Yes.
Trustee Wright?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion passes six, yes, one, no. Okay. In your packet, there is information or reports from the business office. Twelve point twenty-three, the check registry for May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Twelve point twenty-four balance sheet for May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Twelve point twenty-five budget versus actual May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Twelve point six E D P monthly report for May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Does any board members have any questions for Ms. Dupre about these reports?
I would like to move that we move these, that we move these reports to the Special Finance Committee meeting because there are questions that are related to these particular items.
Support.
It has been moved and properly supported. Is there any discussion? Seeing the, the motion to move these items to the special meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. As I call your name, say yes to support it or no not to support it. Vice President Perry?
No.
Secretary Green?
Yes.
Treasurer McIntyre?
Yes.
Assistant Secretary Treasurer McNeil?
Yes.
Trustee Walker?
Yes.
Trustee Wright?
I'm sorry, yes.
And myself, Carol McIntosh, a yes for me. Motion passes six, yes, one, no. Okay. I would like to entertain a motion in a second. Wait a minute, it seems like we've skipped some items. Hold on, wait a minute.
You moved everything in batch. This is a new item. You asked me to insert.
Right, 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 right. Well, I'm trying to make sure I have it together in this packet and make sure. Okay, this is my insert, okay. I would like to entertain a motion in a second to approve action item twenty-one point thirty-eight authorization of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two legal services. And now are we voting on this or removing this to a meeting? What, I'm lost. What page am I on in my agenda? Because I need to.
Twenty-one point thirty-eight. Uh, we, wait a minute, we're at Board Communit, at the Hold.
What?
Media of the Hold, that's where we at now?
That's what I'm trying to find out in our, in our board packet, though. Where are we?
In our agenda, we are, I'm, uh, Mo, that's, is that's where we at?
How long? Twenty-one point thirty-eight. I need to see what that is.
That's the authorization for legal service. Page two thirty-nine.
That's what I need, two thirty-nine. Just a second, please. Two thirty-nine.
Did we vote on the public relations and the government liaison?
No, we hadn't even done that. We done jumped down to twenty-one point thirty-eight. I thought we should be at twenty-one point thirty.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Look at your agenda. We at twenty-one point thirty.
Or maybe I skipped a page in my pack, my, uh, thing. No?
On the back page of your agenda, we at twenty-one point thirty. We just did the, uh.
Trying to find it in my, in my script. That's what I'm trying to do now, and I'm trying to see.
Get to page seven of your script.
Okay. Back to page seven. Oh, okay, here we go. I'm sorry. Didn't we accept this stuff with the batch, though? I think I may have missed.
Not your action. We on Board Committee of the Hold, your action, and that's what we get. We at twenty-one point thirty. I thought, am I correct, uh, Mo?
Yeah, that's the same thing.
You did the motion, yes.
Right. Okay. And now are we, we're voting on action for action item twenty-one point thirty? Is that what we're doing? Because it's.
Well, there's some things in twenty-one, in our twenty-one action that we, is up for discussion that I would like to, or speak on. Is that's where we at?
And I, my packet, I'm, I'm messed. Twenty-one point thirty-five. Let me get to twenty-one point thirty in my packet. Maybe that will help me better understand, because I feel like I am missing something.
Your government, uh, your government services, that's where we at on twenty-one?
Okay. Mo, I think I have a problem with my script, but okay. Um, we're looking at action item twenty-one point thirty, and I can't even find what that is to specify exactly in my packet.
In your packet.
Right. What page is twenty-one point thirty on? That's what I'm looking for.
Page tw- two oh one.
It's your regular board meeting. It's two oh one.
Right. Looking for it, like I said, in this packet, so I could be close with what I'm voting on. Hold on. Uh, 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 sorry, everyone. Flint Board of Education Schedule of Regular Board Meeting. The Flint Board of Education adopts the following schedule of dates. See, this says twenty-one point thirty in my packet says the Flint Board of Education Scheduled of Regular Board Meetings for twenty-one point. Okay. So are we voting to accept this, Mo, is what this is supposed to be? Because it's root with this other stuff, so I think that's where my problem is coming in at.
If you want to separate something from the batch, tell me what specifically the resolution is that you want to separate from the batch. I knew that twenty-one thirty-eight was being reintroduced, but I do know that there was question about twenty-one thirty-three and twenty-five thirty-five.
And twenty-one thirty-five and twenty-one thirty-eight.
Yep, I want to vote on twenty-one point thirty-five separately, so I'd like to, I would move that we separate twenty-one point thirty-five. And what did you say, Dr. Joyce? I guess you have.
Twenty-one point thirty-eight, and I think twenty-one point thirty-three.
So I move that we move twenty-one point thirty-five, twenty-one point thirty-three, and twenty-one point thirty-eight from the batch so that it could be voted on individually?
A move.
Yeah, I, I moved it, so I need a second.
I'll support it. Second, second.
Okay. It has been moved and properly supported. We are on item twenty-one point thirty. Is there any discussion for twenty-one point thirty? Okay, seeing there is no discussion.
No, excuse me, excuse me. Could they scroll that, um, paper up so we'll know where we are? Because I don't have a board packet in front of me.
Okay. Is there any way we can, that?
The screen.
Even, can you scroll the screen?
Too far, too far.
Yeah, it's got to go back up to, thank you. See, twenty-one point three-three, twenty-one point three-three. That's right about, yes. And then I believe, I was asking to see a little bit lower.
So, so we're, so we're voting on twenty-one three-three? To move it, uh, separate. We're going to do those separate. Twenty-one point three-three, twenty-one point three-five, and twenty-one point three-eight is separate. Thank you.
Okay. So now that those things have been excluded, Mo, I could move to accept the other things in batch, or do we need to address the things that we've moved first?
No, go ahead, and the original motion was to accept them in batch. I would like you to, with these separated, get a vote to do all the other ones in batch, and then we can vote on these individually.
Okay. I like, at this time, I like to entertain a motion in a second to accept those items in batch that we're not taking out.
A move.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing there is none, the motion to approve the action items have been properly moved. At this time, I will take a roll call vote. If you support this, say yes. If you don't, signify by saying no. Vice President Perry?
Uh, yes.
Secretary Green?
Yes.
Uh, Treasurer McIntyre?
Yes.
Secretary Treasurer McNeil?
Yes.
Uh, Trustee Walker?
Yes.
Trustee Wright?
Yes.
And myself, it's a yes for me. Now we will go to action item twenty-one point thirty-three. Authorization to extend public relations services contract agreement. And is, I'm taking it that that is our board book? Is that correct, Monica? Because like I said, I'm having a problem following this in my.
Twenty-one thirty-three is your contract with Lambert, the, the public relations company.
Okay. At this time, I would like to, uh, at this time, I would like to entertain a motion in a second to approve action item twenty-one point thirty-three. I think we're on. Okay, so we don't have any motion or any second. Is the motion failing for twenty-one point thirty-three to extend public relations services with Lambert? Okay, motion dies for a lack of support.
Wait a minute. I thought, wait.
Well, what's going on? I, I asked for some motion and some support for twenty-one point thirty-three.
Oh, okay. I didn't quite understand what, what was, okay. Okay, we asked that question clear so we can hear you. I couldn't hear what you were saying.
Okay, uh, board members, I would like to entertain a motion in a second to approve the action item twenty-one point thirty-three authorization to extend public relations services contract for Lambert.
So that's a yes or no? That's what you're looking for, right?
A motion, second.
A motion. So moved. Thank you.
I need a second.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded that we approve action item number twenty-one point thirty-three authorization to extend public relations service contract with Lambert. Is there any discussion? Seeing there is none, at this time, I would take a roll call vote to accept this item. When I call your name, say yes or no. Vice President Perry?
Yes.
Secretary Green?
Yes.
Treasurer McIntyre?
No.
Assistant Secretary McNeil?
No.
Trustee Walker?
Yes.
Trustee Wright?
Yes.
And myself, um, I'm torn between this. Maybe we're not, okay, I'm going to say at this time, yes, because the motion will pass regardless. So it passes with two no and five yes. We're moving to action item twenty-one point thirty-five governmental liaison services for the fiscal year of two thousand and twenty-two. Board members, I would like to entertain a motion in a second to approve action item twenty-one point thirty-five governmental liaison services. for the fiscal year of twenty-twenty-two. Is there?
So moved.
Second.
It has been, uh, moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Madam, Madam President, this is, uh, Adrian. Uh, as it relates to this item, I've actually been advised to abstain myself from voting, given a pre-existing relationship with, uh, Mr. Brown, uh, to avoid any conflict of interest. So I just wanted to state that for the record.
Okay, we have one abstention. Uh, is there any other discussion? So at this time, I will take a roll call vote to accept or not to accept, uh, Mr. Brown's services. Vice President Perry?
Yes.
Secretary Green? Treasurer McIntyre?
No.
Assistant Secretary McNeil?
No.
Trustee Walker is abstaining. Trustee Wright?
Yes.
And myself, no. Motion fail.
Is Danielle Green there? Oh, okay.
She didn't, she, motion still fails, but no, she's not there. She didn't. Okay, next we move on to action item twenty-one point thirty-eight, Authorization, uh, Fiscal Year Legal Services. And, let me see. Twenty-one point thirty-eight, Authorization for Legal Services. And I'm gonna turn and see what that is. Make sure I have that right. Because I think I saw possibly a typo. Let me see, twenty-one point thirty-eight.
That's on page two thirty-nine. I, wait a minute. Yeah, that's on page two forty.
Two forty, okay. All right. Who necessary may leave them. Okay, um, on this discussion, I would like to, uh, move to not, move to, um, let me see, boys. I'm not understanding why the Williams firm is included with the Board of Education's approval of a resolution on May nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one with M A S B for legal services. E, M A S B is retained to represent the board. The areas of expertise include, okay, so I am, I am, um, okay, I am, okay, I guess I have to still put it on there, but I'm not, I'm not, can I, can I get some clarity as to why the Williams firm is being included with M A S B?
Oh, this. So to, to give you clarity about your executive summary, it just stated that they have been. That's all it says. They have been. And that on the nineteenth, you executed a resolution for M A S B.
Okay, so I'm just making sure what I'm voting on. There is been a discussion. Okay. Repeat that again, so I can be clear. You said they are, this, this is simply stating, we have done business with them, and now we're doing business with M A S B. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. That the board approved a resolution on May nineteenth.
Right. What is this? What is this about Butzel Long representing the school district? Maybe I'll be discussion point. Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarity. Okay, at this time, I would like to, at this time, I would, board members, at this time, I would like to entertain a motion and a second to approve action item twenty-one point thirty-eight, Authorization of the fiscal year twenty-twenty, Legal Services.
A move.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded. Uh, are there any questions?
I, I do.
I have a question.
Just so the line.
Okay, go ahead. Who said, who went first?
I just want to make sure I'm clear what I'm voting on, too. So if we're voting that, I heard Mo, but I'm still a little fuzzy. Yes, is because we've been working with the Williams firm, that we're going to work with M A S B now? Is that what I'm understanding correctly? Or is it something else I need to know?
I, I need.
Or I got it completely wrong.
Okay, well, the action requires says, board approval is required and necessary to remain legally compliant and allow administration to check invoices for services provided by various legal vendors throughout the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And the background is, the Board of Education and the Flint School District must ensure it receives uh, effective legal representation for twenty-one through twenty-twenty-two school year. Depending on the issues, uh, presented, the Board of Education will decide which firm to contact for this. Uh, there has been discussion for years by the Board of Education, members and administration regarding the expenses related to legal fees to assure the board and administration is moving in a concentrated effort to reduce legal expenses and show treasury. The board is improving the district's E D E P situation. A recommendation is being made to reduce the total amount of funds allocated for legal fees for the fiscal year of twenty-twenty-one from six hundred thousand, and then next year will be three hundred thousand. Uh, funds will be split between various law firms. The funds will be made available attached. You will find the legal fees paid during the fiscal, uh, year of twenty-twenty-one. These current currents has lived in the account system. And the discussion points, it says, the intent of this action is to continue legal vendor contracts with Trune Law Firm, Butzel Long, and Seacrest Wardell, P C. Below is a sample of their expertise. And then it says, Trune Law Firm specializes in Michigan school law with expertise included school policies, bond counsel, real estate negotiations, guidance of law, changes within educational law. Butzel Long represents the school district in an ongoing A C L U lawsuit. Seacrest Wardell, P C provides counsel on a class action lawsuit against the state of Michigan regarding special education funds. The Williams firm has been a longtime legal vendor of the school board. The Board of Education approved a resolution on May nineteen, twenty-twenty-one with M A S B for legal services. M A S B is retained to represent the Board of Education. Their areas of expertise include human relations, employment issues, and contracts negotiations. Board approval of the resolution at the regular board meeting on June sixteen. Okay, so we are not picking the Williams firm back up. I'm just gonna say it. Are we?
Right, that's, yeah, that's what I wanted to know.
We are not supposed to be, we're not picking them, uh, so how do we?
So let me finish my question. My question, the other end of my question is, after you read that, the three, we got that cap that I was, is that, the cap is on there for the three hundred and some thousand, is, did I hear that correctly?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, 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 okay. I got you. Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, so this action to exclude the Williams firm from being included in our, um, legal dealings? Do I need to exclude that, Mo? Or is that understood in this document? Because I do want that on the record.
You want, and as part of the resolution, you just tell me what you want.
I do not want the Williams firm included, because I do not want us to have to get legal representation from them this year. They are too expensive. And you said this is not included, though. This is just a discussion point. But like I said, it was a resolution passed for M A S B. And they're, and they're thrown in with M A S B, and I don't want any funny business. So what I, so I would like to make a motion, motion to remove them from the document altogether. And I need some support.
Support.
Okay, the motion passes that the Williams firm will not be included in our legal dealings, and they will be excluded from this document. At this time, I would like to, uh, entertain a motion and a second to approve the rest of the document. Uh, once the Williams firm is excluded, I need a motion and a second.
It's already been moved, unless you want to redo that.
Okay, it's been, okay, we need to vote now. I'm sorry, a roll call vote to remove them. But this time, when I call your name, we'll be taking a roll call vote, yes.
Is there gonna be any discussion?
Okay, I'm sorry, any discussion?
Does this preclude the question? I have asked for invoices for the Williams firm. Does?
This don't have nothing to do with that.
Okay, all right, so this isn't, so I'm still gonna be able to pursue those questions and the budget and all that kind of thing. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question, Carol? This may be something for a later time, but, um, does, does it, any relevance to the, I don't know if the Williams firm is under contract with us, or if we had that cap when Casey was president of the board, and I requested that cap for the Williams firm? Would that cancel that out, or was that in place? Because I never got a follow-up to that.
Well, I'm moving that.
What was that cap?
Excuse me?
What, what was that cap for the Williams?
I never got a, I have, I don't know. I never got a, got an answer. I was, when Casey was president, and I, and I originally brought up the Williams firm and all the money we were paying them as a district. I never, I actually included in all that stuff, and I was always included. So I'm not sure. I don't know.
With permission, uh, President McIntosh, if we could continue this discussion in the Special Finance Committee, Committee meeting? Because I think this is particularly germane to a lot of the issues.
You can, you can, because it has something to do with the budget. So you can. At this time, we are voting representation for the board, and at this time, requesting that they not be included. So at this time, I will be taking a roll call vote to exclude the Williams firm from, uh, from dealing with the board legally.
Miss.
Are legal. Go ahead.
I just have, I just have a quick question. Um, I definitely want to do what's in the, within the pleasure of the board. Um, I just had a question, again, from a policies and procedure standpoint. Do we need to go through the, in our bylaws, it talks about an evaluation of, uh, our legal services in order to reach a determination of, uh, removing a lawyer? Do we open ourselves up to any further litigation if we don't go through that process?
Well, uh, I think that process was supposed to take place in April, and I don't think the Williams firm is on contract with us anymore. So that, that, that has been my position all along. We don't, we don't, we're not on contract with them, so.
Yes.
I have a.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was making sure that Adrian was finished.
Yeah, uh, the only other question I had was with regards to M A S B, uh, and their legal services. I just wondered, is that an additional cost for us, be it that we're already members of M A S B?
Uh, if Ms. Sharice works with us, it's a hundred and fifty dollars an hour.
Okay, all right, that helps. Thank you.
Yes.
Can I add something, Carol? And I don't need to be the damn horse, but I, I don't recall exactly where or when, but I was told that, um, the cap was in place for the Williams firm. And I don't know if that consists of a contract, or if that is a contract. You know what I'm saying? I really don't know. So just relevant to, um, what Trustee Walker brought up, I just wonder, is that a contract? Are we in contact with the Williams firm? I, I don't know that, because I told you it was a cap. If you do a cap, it seems like it would be a contract involved.
Well, maybe at the time that you did your cap, maybe they were on contract at that time. I'm not sure about then, but I, I have asked, and nobody has turned up with the contract for them. Nope.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you, President.
Board, Board President?
Yes.
I'm required, uh, Monica, whether or not the Williams firm had a contract. And I was told that they have a contract through June thirtieth.
Okay, so this is for renewals then. So we are not under obligation to renew. I guess, um, I don't know.
I was just clarifying, I'm sorry, I was just clarifying or adding or, or providing uh, information when you, you said that you had requested for a contract, and you, you hadn't seen one. And so I was just providing information that I, I, I acquired last week, and was told that the Williams firm had the contract through June, June thirtieth. So just wanted, you just wanted to add information so that you would know that have an answer to your question.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, I, and I think.
And that's fine, because June the third is just a few days away, so.
Go ahead, Ms. Wright.
Okay, um, when this issue first came up at the last meeting, um, I had a concern, which I still have that concern um, this evening. Um, but you know, I, I clearly recognize that things change. However, I also know that things need to be done, um, correctly. And it is my understanding that a letter went out to the Williams firm, ending their work with the district, and there has been no board discussion or decision regarding that. And so my only issue isn't that we maintain a relationship with the Williams firm, but that it be a board decision done in the correct manner. Uh, and so, you know, because that firm does work with, has a contract through um, the thirtieth, and my understanding is that a letter went out from Board President, asking them not to do any further work with the district without any, well, without any, um, decision being made as a board regarding that. So that is my concern, that we are adding all these different attorney firms, and we've not really had any open discussion about why we're doing all of this, other than I do hear, and I do hear people being concerned about legal fees, which I am as well. Um, but I want us to make sure that we are doing these things in a very transparent and open manner.
Um, yes, when we brought on M A S B, and we, um, initially introduced M A S B, it was to offset the fees that we were being charged by the Williams firm. And it was a very open discussion at the board table and voted on.
But this was after the letter went out to.
Oh, no, it wasn't.
This was after the letter went out to, um,
No, it wasn't.
Williams firm. And my understanding is that the M A S B cannot represent the board as their board attorney. So I'm, I'm at a loss as to um, the rationale for all of these changes without having a clear understanding of the role of each of these different firms, which I did hear that. And I'm like Mrs., uh, McIntyre in that respect. I'm just hearing this. I have not had any opportunity to really think about it and look it over, because I don't have any information regarding all of these different firms and what their roles will be. Um, so I have an issue with what appears to be a situation that has not been very open and transparent.
Well, I, the, the letter was not sent out before we voted. The let, we voted, we discussed it openly about the Williams firm and getting assistance from M A S B to offset that, because the, the prices were astronomical, and we talked about the cost openly when we voted. Now.
I don't recall missing any meetings, and I don't want to belabor the point, because I, I, I'm very clear on the timeline of these things. So it's really, you know, it's gonna be kinda
Okay.
back and forth, and I'm not interested in doing that. But I just want us to do things in an orderly manner, that's all.
Thank you. And we did, we, we were very mindful. Um, and these other law firms have been already, um, with the district. I did not add anybody, and we did vote on that openly and have discussion at a full board meeting. Is there any other discussion?
Yes, I would like to read an email from Attorney Lee. They came to, I, I'm quite sure everybody got it. So I'm gonna read bits and pieces, right where she stated. I would like to clarify that I am not the board retain attorney, nor cannot be retained as such. So she stated clearly what she's not acting as the, uh, the board, uh, attorney. So that is clear. We keep saying that she's acting, uh, as a. So that is clear. We keep saying that she's acting uh as attorney and that's not true. And she sent out an email to us all to explain it so we we can get our language corrected. And everyone has that email because I'm looking at it. She sent it to all the board members. Put her role in for this uh for the board. So, and I think that's what a confusion. My understanding was that our attorney William contracted in in uh in June the thirty. And that's one of the reason that um we retain some, we didn't get attorney yet for that. But my understanding, and I don't know what board meeting wa- was that, but we have had this discussion. We have been complaining about these high prices and trying to get some some handled on it. But even when we was asking for the contract, no one seems to really come up with the contract. We wanted to see that contract. We want to see those invoices, what has been charged us. And we have to this day been denied that. Now we go, oh, we got a contract. Oh, and this and that. But a lot of discussion from me, I have heard some of it. So I, but I know for sure we cannot say that uh Attorney Lee is coming in to replace our attorney William. That's not what she stated in her memo to us. That's all I have to say.
And just as a point of clarity, I am not um misunderstanding any of the role of Ms. uh Lee. And I'm not under the understanding that she is the board attorney. And I will repeat, my concern is that we handle things appropriately as it deals with the board making the si- the decision to end a contract and the full board making this a decision to enter into others. And so, as I said, I I and I truly don't want to belabor this conversation, but I did want to um state my um opinion.
Excuse me?
Yes.
This is Mrs. Dunprey. May I please make a statement?
Yes.
So um I just want to clarify for everyone that I sent an email on June the tenth at four eighteen P M. That included Treasurer McIntyre and the board president that the Williams firm invoices and checks were provided to Monica and that they could be picked up when the packet was picked up. But I just want everybody to understand that that has been provided and it was available to be picked up. Thank you.
Um, yeah, I think the issue is when you bill somebody for this type of money, you should be able to send them an invoice with billable hours. What you did to earn thirty thousand dollars in a month and fifty four thousand in the next month and eighty eight thousand and that. That is what when we speak of, uh, we're not talking about just show us what we paid him because we know we paid him. We want to know what services besides legal services or contracted legal services. That's pretty broad for a tick, for a bill with a ticket on it like that. If you fought, if you were in litigations for us, then why doesn't it say litigations? To my, and if you're an attorney and you're billing somebody, you're supposed to be able to put the time and the date and how many hours were spent on that and what you were addressing. And we don't see any of that. And that is really what we've been waiting on. But I don't want to linger on because this is not totally about that. Like I said, I was trying to remove them to assure that we don't uh accidentally or unbeknown to us retain them again. Because I don't see how the district can afford that.
And also in May, we do have, uh, we paid him again in May. So we paid him again another twenty nine thousand in May. That's not on that um on the report that was in this package. That one they showed up, it stopped in paper. So we did pay him again in May. So we have not shortage him anything um in his contracts that end June the thirtieth. And in outstanding invoices that's due are between June the first and the thirtieth. Maybe, hopefully, we can see those as well.
Okay, so now, Mo, can you bring us back to our original motion because we're all back now? Or do you know where we are at?
Yeah, you're still in discussion. If there's no more discussion, the the vote is to approve or deny resolution twenty one point three eight, authorization of F Y twenty two legal services with the exclusion of the Williams firm.
Okay, and that had been moved and seconded, right?
Correct.
Okay, so at this time, i- if there is no more question, we'll go to a roll call vote. Um, as I call your name, say yes to accept or no to deny. Vice President Perry?
No.
Secretary Green?
Yes, with a correction, yes.
Treasurer McIntyre? Treasurer? Assistant Secretary Treasurer McNeil?
Yes, without correction.
Trustee Walker?
No.
Trustee Wright?
No.
And it's a yes for me with the proper corrections. Motion passes four, yes, three, no. Okay, in your packet, did I say this part? I think I thought I went over this. In your packet, there are informational reports from the business office for twelve twenty three.
And it's been tabled and moved to the special.
All right, I thought I saw that before, but I wasn't sure. Okay. We did twenty one thirty eight. We've already worked on that, yes. Okay, new business. Board members, at this time, we will receive an update on the extended COVID nineteen learning plan. We will give the public an opportunity to comment after we have heard the update. Community members, if you wish to speak, please make sure you raise your hand or submit a comment in the chat during the presentation to alert Stephen to call upon you after Mr. Jones is done speaking. I now turn the floor over to Mr. Jones.
Good evening, community and board members. Stephen, will you?
Thank you, sir. Uh, today I want to give you, I want to give you uh the end of the year information and also forecast some goals and some plans from the academic uh department, uh Office of Academics. So Stephen, you can go ahead. I just want to first tell you, um, our summer school program. Excuse me, I need to move something. Our summer school program uh will begin June twenty eighth through July fifteenth uh for our K eight uh scholars and June twenty eighth through July twenty second for our high school scholars. And this will be Monday through Thursday. Our tier one schools will start at seven forty five and end at eleven forty five. Uh, that is what they're used to. And our tier two scholars will begin at eight forty five and end at twelve forty five. The summer, the summer school program offerings, our kindergarten boot camp, K eight program will explore your world discovery and exploration. And our high school will be involved in credit recovery. Stephen, you can move forward. Our enrollment and attendance uh as of June is thirty three twenty. Um, and our daily attendance is seventy one percent for the entire district. Go ahead, Stephen. Thank you. Our wellness team continues to support our families uh in those bullet areas. Uh, we speak of this every month. Uh, as you can see, those numbers, uh, two hundred and forty five home visits have been done. And we're continuing to uh work with our families. And there is some upcoming information uh that we're going to share at the end of this presentation of what we're working towards for the twenty one twenty two school year. Go ahead, Stephen. Our DIBLs data, uh, our scholars at or above benchmark uh fall twenty twenty, uh, our scholars benchmark or above benchmark was twenty point two percent. And our spring twenty twenty one students, uh, well, they fell fell uh below that in winter. And then our scholars, our teachers worked hard to bring them back up. And we can at least say uh that our scholars did make gain at the end of the year, twenty point two percent. Go ahead, Stephen. Our student growth, fall twenty twenty to spring, uh, twenty twenty one in math, thirty three percent of our scholars met their target growth in math. Thirty two point six percent of our scholars met their target growth in reading. Go ahead, Stephen. Due to what we just saw, um, as none of us uh in our Office of Academics or in our in our schools uh believe that our scholars should be performing uh low. Uh, we do understand it's a pa- pandemic year. Uh, we have some goals and uh we understand the root cause. Our scholars varying ex- experiences due to the disruption of in-person instruction and associated trauma from the pandemic. We understand that uh some of our numbers are low. That is not the total cause. I think that we have to do a lot of work uh in our classrooms with rigor, uh, making sure that we are adhering to our focus on instruction and our model, formative assessment, cognitive engagement, and scholar voice. And so here's a couple of goals, um, after uh our communication with principals and talking about looking at our target growth. Uh, here's a couple of our goals that we're looking at. An increase in scholar engagement along with equitable access to educational opportunities that builds scholar agency, emphasize critical thinking and problem solving, and allow scholars to exercise their creativity and curiosity. Secondly, all scholars meet their N W E A target growth as as measured by where they are academically when they start and end the twenty twenty one twenty two school year. I want to explain that, uh, when scholars go to a particular classroom, their target growth uh depends on what the teacher is teaching them and uh progress monitoring from the time that they get there with that teacher until the time that they leave. Uh, target growth is based on that year and that year alone. And it is not, it does not mean that our scholars are proficient, but if they meet their target growth, they're at least uh showing a considerable amount of growth. And to speak to our uh students uh with special needs, scholars with identified needs should have a comprehensive academic plan and robust support. And that is what uh our goals are for next year. Uh, we are focused on literacy. That is in our MYKIP goal. But these goals here uh goes along with our uh Michigan uh recovery plan that we are putting together. You can go to the next slide. And here's our ac- academic plan. Engage all scholars in grade level content, high-quality integrated curriculum, and culturally responsive instruction. Assess every scholar's strengths and needs using benchmark and formative assessment paired with teacher observations to establish a baseline and continually monitor progress. Focus instruction on priority standards, emphasizing skills over content with cognitive engagement, and create opportunities to integrate scholar voice and decision-making into learning. And lastly, provide targeted support, strategies, and resources for families such as take-home books and devices to support academic well-being at home. You can go to the next slide. And uh, given to us by our state, um, by way of our I S D, the districts have to come up with a scholar recovery plan. The great thing about this is that we've already started. Even before we heard this news, uh, we've been working hard with our wellness team. As you can see, every month we were reporting what our parent facilitators, our wellness team, our principals, and our staff has been doing to ensure that we are uh taking care of our scholars, their needs, and uh the supports that families have been asking for. So these five areas are the areas that the state uh are wanting the school districts to put plans together for. And so we have already started uh with our wellness plan, our academic plan, our school climate plan, family and community engagement through our strategic plan, and post-secondary. And so we are happy to say we are ahead as it pertains to us already having things uh in in order and in place. And we want to give you more information on this plan in our next board meeting so that you can see some of the things that we are doing to ensure that our scholars uh recover uh as they should. Thank you. This this ends our presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Um, Stephen, do we, do we have any um community members that wish to comment about the plan, Stephen?
Uh, yes, ma'am, I do have one, possibly two. Hands raised.
Okay.
I have Betty Nostrand has her hand raised. So I'll go ahead and unmute her. Betty, you are muted. Um, if you have not already, please state your name and address and you may begin whenever you're ready.
I'm Betty Nostrand. I've already stated my address. I am really worried about the mental health of the children after not being in school for so long and how that's going to be addressed. I'm also worried about if for some reason we have to shut down again. Making sure that children, hey, hey, guys, but sorry about that. Um, making sure that children, that children, sorry, my kids are, I've got five kids at home. And they're all special needs. Making sure that kids who are unable to do online for whatever reason are able to get packets without hesitation. It took a year for me to get packets for my children. That should not happen. What is your plan to make sure that this stuff does not happen in the new school year? If you could answer that, I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it possible for um the superintendent to get this lady's information so that we can give her some answers to her questions, Ms. Stewart? Or direct her as it pertains to her concerns?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Ms. Nostrand, if you would, send a, if you have an email address, please send that in the questions section and I will forward that to administration so that they may reach out. Uh, another hand raised here from Lizzie Fairchild. I will unmute Lizzie. Lizzie, you are muted. If you have not already, please state your name and address and you may begin when you're ready.
No, I was trying to change, change that. Sorry.
Oh, okay. So you have no, no comment or question?
Well, the same one applies. You know, what's happening to the third graders? What are we doing for our children? I think the graphics are really nice, but it just, I just don't feel that there's a sufficient space for the board to dialogue with the community about just basic questions since this was such a difficult year for our children.
Okay, um, can we get, ma'am, can you give Stephen your information and we can forward your questions to the administration?
I would think everyone would want to hear the answers. It just shouldn't be me asking and me hearing from them. It should be our conversation together. What's gonna happen to our children? Such a basic question.
Ms. McIntyre, uh, Ms. McIntosh, can I time in? This is McNeil.
Um.
Is it okay?
Uh, can you answer her question? I think maybe the administration should be answering that.
Yeah, but I just want to say something. The two people just spoke. They've been fighting. And Ms. Betty, I I, my heart goes out with you. She's been crying out. These ladies have been crying out for help for a long time. And I just think that somebody need to put something in place and tell them how they can get past that hurdle because something happened again. Um, they shouldn't have to been out that long. And I, she had reached out to me. Now she's reaching out. Uh, they came to the meeting. They're reaching out. And they deserve that much respect because without these kids, there is no Flint Community School. Without special ed, there's no G I S D and all of this. So let's let one of our administration give them an honest answer, maybe put a plan together so they don't get lost like they did before, if that's okay. They deserve that much respect. You might hear something from somebody.
Well.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm not exactly sure. Ms. Stewart, are you prepared to speak to that?
Not tonight.
Okay, she's not under obligation to answer questions and she's not prepared to speak to that. So ma'am, if you could give your information to Stephen for me, and then Ms. Stewart will do a, um, follow-up.
Can I say something, President McIntosh? This is Laura McIntyre.
Yes.
Ms. Betty has, this isn't the first time she's been ma- in the public comment, nor is it the first time that she's given her email and contact information to the administration. So I, I want to extend my apologies and sympathy because I, I don't think this is how we should be treating our parents. And I'm, I'm appalled. And I don't know how her giving her contact information yet again is going to resolve anything. And to speak to the other speaker, um, I'd like to at some, I'd like to make a motion at some point to have some kind of, you know, to, to respond to the community's questions of having some interaction directly with them and not have it mediated through the administration. This whole meeting started with, with, you know, issues of communication between the board and the administration. Perhaps we can have some kind of a town hall where we can have some open dialogue without these colonial Roberts administration.
Okay, just one second. We have a community meeting coming up. So, and Ms. Stewart has their information. Ms. Stewart.
Real community meeting.
Well, that is what we are trying to set up, Ms. Laura. We have to give them the opportunity to make the effort. So.
We, and we had a community meeting and it, it failed abysmally.
That's talking about.
Ms. McIntosh, we're gonna work on that. We, uh, we're getting that in order. We, we're working on it. We'll add that to the agenda.
Okay, let's not, yes, please, order. So we're not talking about the past. We're moving forward. We are, Ms. Dr. Joyce is setting up the community meeting, and we should have that information to put on the website when they get, when her and the superintendent gets the details worked out. Are there any other quest, any other questions or comments or concerns, Stephen, from the community?
Yes, ma'am. I have, uh, Arthur Woodson again, but I also have, uh, Betty Nostrant would like to say one more thing. I just.
Proceed.
Allow it. Okay. Uh, Betty, I've unmuted you. Go ahead and, and state.
Hello, I, I have one thing to say. Um, you got, last time I talked to you guys, my information was sent over. I sent it all over the whole nine yards. I fought hard and long to get my kids packets. They finally got them in May. And I do thank Ms. Stewart for, she is the reason. But in the process of this, I had to go to court for truancy for my children who couldn't do education. And I have that on my record. And I have to go through programs for truancy because my kids could not attend school while I was fighting for them to attend. I had a district employee go to this court session and say that I was not trying.
Wow.
Hmm.
I am.
That's not true. That was true. She tried.
It is not true.
It's not true.
I said it was not true. I got shot down and told that I was not trying to give my kids an education. Something has to be done. Something has to be put in place where these kids are not falling through the cracks. That is why I have, I have asked to be a P A C for her, the G I S committee because I want to make sure that these special needs students aren't falling through the cracks. And this year they have majorly.
Yes, they have.
Ma'am, I'm sorry you've had to experience that.
Uh, board, um, boy, President, I don't know if it's not too late or not, but I just think on behalf of Ms. Betty that the, uh, uh, school should write a letter. I know for a fact this lady, she reached out to me on Facebook. I gave her superintendent's, uh, number, and I even held her to contact with you. She tried going through the, um, enrollment department. She couldn't even get an answer out of that. So she fought hard. This is not her fault. Um, and I was directing her to the right, um, people. Hopefully she can get, you know, get this resolved before the truancy stuff came up. So this is definitely not her fault, and she shouldn't have to suffer because she was reaching out. And I told her, I'll call her again. So I just think maybe we could, I don't know what the guidelines is, but we should write to court or write them and tell them that the district failed her. She, she didn't fail, the district failed her in the midst of this pandemic.
Thank you, Dr. Joyce. Um, are there any other comments or statements to be made by the public, Stephen?
Yes, ma'am. I also have Arthur Woodson would like to make a comment. So I will unmute him. Mr. Woodson, you are unmuted. Feel free to unmute. I believe we have already have your name and address on file. So you may begin.
Thank you. I was, I was wanting to say this. There's gonna be some people mad. Uh, that's, that's okay with me, uh, because I don't care. Ms. Stewart, we spoke from the beginning a- a- and we fought hard to get you as superintendent G I S D from the start. They was taking money from the district. Nobody from the board except for Daniel Green was there. That's not including you, uh, Joyce McNeil and McIntyre because y'all wasn't on the board at the time.
Right.
You had James Avery from, uh, the G I S D board who is over youth quests that they want to put over our kids. Did not want to give Flint kids the money from the formula for G I S D, and you want him over our after-school, um, program. You want Chamber Commerce, Tim Herman, over our program. You want Ridge White, Ridgeway White over everything. Why do we have to depend on them to make decisions? Ms. Stewart, why? If anything, they come in and give us assistance. They don't come in and tell us what we're gonna do. If they don't give us money, give us the money, but don't tell us how we gotta spend it because they see other money coming in and they want that money too. And to have meetings with them is highly upsetting. And then lie to people and say that you're not having meetings with them. Mr. Walker, I am skittish with you. I am really skittish because you worked with Tim Herman, Chamber Commerce. I am real skittish because they downtown definitely don't want us in their, in their plan and in their program. And there's a lot of brothers and sisters, boule and gatekeepers who want to be rap famous. And they will take a buyout at any time, just like a couple of those pastors that speaks out. See, I speak out against you. I don't care. I'm here for the people, not for fame and not for money and not to, uh, better myself, but to better Flint. Ms. Wright, Ms. Perry, it's time. It's time. Because everything that has happened to this district, you all was there. I get tired of hearing people say, I've been here for thirty years. If you did something during those thirty years, we wouldn't be in the situation we in now. It's time for gatekeepers and boule to move out the way. Nineteen fourteen, W E D Boys came up with the boule to stop Marcus Garvey from si- taking the African-Americans back over to Africa. The boule are like gatekeepers. It's to disenfr- disenfranchise the black community. It, they look like us, but they're not helping us. They are here to keep us down so that other people can make money off of our misery. The people in the city of Flint has not been made whole. Those ninety-four millions coming into the city, ninety-nine million coming into the school. The community not gonna see it because we got the boules and the gatekeepers making sure that the money stays with the people downtown. That's all we wanted, Ms. Stewart, was somebody to come to the table. We make our own table instead of being put at the kiddy table. We've made it to where we met with Ridgeway White. We met with Congressman Killian. You took that from us. And then you want to come up with another type of committee? No, we want to be at the meeting before the meeting. We want to be where the decisions are made, not where they bring the decisions to us. That's the problem here. This could have been avoided a long time ago. But see, don't nobody want to work with the people in the community? They want to keep on working with the people that they think can make them rap famous, live in luxury, live in mansions. Thank you.
Is there anybody else, Stephen?
That is it for the public comments at this time.
Okay. Does any board members have any questions about the plan? Okay.
I have a question. I just, I would just like some more clarity about how it aligns with the strategic plan because I'm still not clear about the specifics of the strategic plan. So I just think it's just, you know, that needs further discussion. And I'm just very unsatisfied with not having what I see as a vision for the district to make any of these, any of these decisions moving forward with. And thank you, Mr. Woodson, for your courage to say what you, what you had to say. And for everybody's input. We need, we need more of that. We need more of the community.
Okay. Is there any other board members that would like to, uh, make a statement? Okay, at this time, I would like to give the public the final opportunity to address the board before we adjourn the meeting. Stephen, please check and let me know if anyone has their hand raised or has submitted a request to speak in the chat. Okay, before we adjourn, uh, would any board members like to comment? Okay, the board's next scheduled meeting will be held on Wednesday, July fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one at six-thirty P M. I am hearing we may be in-person meeting next month. So stay tuned to the district's website for the meeting location. This meeting is now adjourned. The time is nine fourteen. Good night, everybody.